All right, we are going to call together the fifth of May Budget Study Workshop. Uh, we will start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Keldorf here, councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Boiles.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baldino.
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here. Uh, and now if you all rise, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll take a procedural motion to read all ordinance and resolutions by denent title. Oh, sorry, we have any comment? Comment, Madam Clerk. Seeing none, I will now take a procedural motion.
Boiles, I'm moved.
And Baldino, seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any abstentions? All right, on to staff presentations. Over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I will kick things off this afternoon with our budget presentation. First of all, I want to thank you for coming at two o'clock in the afternoon. Appreciate it. I know we've scheduled this from, I believe, two to six o'clock. Um, hopefully, we can get through all of it by then. And, um, before I have our CFO, Paul, uh, begin the presentation, I'd like to just say a few words, kind of outlining, um, from a, from kind of a high level view, um, all that's gone into this, this budget. Um, first and foremost, we are presenting a balanced budget tonight, which is, uh, obviously very positive. Uh, a lot has gone into the budget. Uh, as you know, we, we usually, uh, begin the process, the lengthy process, in early February, and, um, we sit down with each department. Uh, Paul and I go through the, the budget with each of them, line by line. So, a lot has gone into this over the last three or four months. Um, a number of, of categories are, are gone through in detail, including the CIP budget, which we'll be presenting tonight also. Um, it is an ambitious budget that you'll see. Uh, we did hold the line, like, in each department, uh, very, uh, proud of each department head that did, uh, hold the line on expenses for as much as possible, other than the typical, you know, cost of livings or, um, or other expenses that, that you, you see, um, in the budget like this. Uh, we've maintained a twenty-five percent reserve, uh, in the, as part of this budget, which, uh, also helps to keep our AAA credit rating, as you know. Uh, we also held the line on revenues. I know last year, that was a big discussion. We did not project, uh, any significant revenue increases in this budget. Um, really, in my mind, there's three key, in, in terms of the, the big ticket items that were, were, were given as part of this budget. Um, one, you'll see, and Paul will get into greater detail, our PERS UAL this year is at a level of two point nine million dollars. And as you know, we get that automatically from PERS, based upon their investment earnings or lack thereof. Uh, this budget also, uh, adds seven new police officers, which Council previously approved, uh, in previous budgets, but we are actually budgeting all seven of those in this budget. And then thirdly, uh, the, one of the big ticket items is, is you know, the plunge will be coming online the end of this year. So, we have budgeted for six months of O and M and staffing for the plunge. So, those, those three items alone represent about five million dollars, which is really the, the bulk of the ex, the upside on the expenses. Um, another key item I wanted to bring up that, again, Paul will get into is, we've looked at five-year projections and even gone out ten years, but you'll notice that at year three, we are projecting a structural deficit. And we'll get into the details on how we got to that and maybe some measures that we can take in the future to address that. Um, so with that, um, again, I want to thank Paul, the finance staff that worked diligently on this, each department head, each, each staffer, division manager that was part of, of working up to, to get to these numbers that we'll be sharing tonight. And then also, again, thank you for, for your input and guidance and direction throughout the year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
If I can, for Rules of the Road, if no one here objects, can I ask that if we have questions on individual departmental budgets, let's hit those as they're presented, so we don't have to come back around and, and do it twice. Otherwise, we'll be here till midnight. So, I know it'll make each slide maybe take a little bit longer as we kind of interrogate it, but in theory, that should, that should make this process more efficient.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think Mayor took some of my thunder, and also the city manager, I had a little beginning speech too, regards to, um, departmental budgets. And instead of waiting to the end, I do have fifty-five slides, and, and it's a two hundred and twenty million dollar budget, so it takes some time to get through that detail. But before I begin, I do want to look around the room. I do want to thank my team, my budget team, that's been putting, uh, the long hours trying to get this budget. I know, uh, Daryl mentioned it starts in February, but for finance, it starts in January. So, we do a lot of background work, trying to prep the worksheets and whatnot, so I'd want to thank my team for working on the budget. I do want to thank the department heads and their analysts and their staff for all the back and forth regards to the meetings and, and the numbers and all the questions that I have for their budget as well. And then, of course, the leadership from Daryl. And lastly, of course, the Council, sitting aside your afternoon, uh, for a four-hour budget study session. Uh, with that said, let me begin. Um, not going to go through the timeline. We are here at May fifth. Um, and today, as we go through the proposed budget, any kind of changes, uh, I myself, but also my team, will take notes regards to any kind of changes. And then we'll come back June third. That's the goal, to come back to Council for your consideration and adoption of the budget. Uh, really, this presentation, as I mentioned, fifty-five slides, but it's really broken up into three sections. The first section is an overview of the revenues, expenditures, kind of the thirty thousand level, looking down, and then the fund balances, and also going into some of the five-year slash ten-year forecasts as well. And then we'll go into our departmental budgets. And at the time, depending upon, um, uh, time-wise, if we're two hours in or so, if we want to take a break, fifteen-minute break, it'll be ideal to take a break there, and then, uh, finish up with the capital improvement budget that's proposed for next year as well. With that said, as I mentioned, um, I know Daryl took a little bit of my thunder, but, um, we do have a proposed budget for next year. Um, it is, uh, it's hard not to turn the news and hear various municipalities, whether it be county, even state and federal level, to hear, uh, budget challenges that are, um, in front of them even till next year's budget. But we do have a balanced budget that's proposed for you in front of you. Uh, for the departments, they have held their line as we, uh, Daryl and I, when we made the kick, we, when we conducted our kickoff meeting, that's what we told the department heads, due to the, kind of the anomalies and question marks that are happening around the world, but also, of course, um, just locally as well, just impacts to the local economy. So, we wanted to make sure we held the line. And lastly, um, expenditures are rising faster than revenues, as I stated this, uh, last year as well, but it's been that way for some time, for a couple of years now. So, we just wanted to emphasize that as well. With that said, um, here specifically for El Segundo, there are just various, um, highlights for the Council that I know the Council is aware of. We have a, but, very diverse, uh, revenue stream that really kind of shelters us from any kind of big economic turn. Obviously, we won't be a hundred percent protected, but let's say, for instance, if there's a sales tax, if you heavily rely on sales tax on auto sales, due to recent tariffs, that might have an impact in your future auto sales, hence your sales tax. We are pretty diverse, um, in that sense, to protect us from some big economic downturns. As you know, location-wise, we're next to LAX, the ocean. I mean, location, 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 as you know, in real estate. Um, we are in a prime location, and it's a highly des- uh, desired, uh, community where we have a very robust, uh, school district. We will maintain our AAA rating. Uh, we have a low debt. We only have two debts on our books. Our P O B was locked in at two point seven percent a couple of years ago, a fantastic move by the Council. That really is actually going to save the city approximately two million dollars. So, as Daryl mentioned, we have a UAL payment of two point nine million, but if we did initiate these P O B bonds and locked in at two point seven, you're probably looking at close to a five million dollar UAL payment. So, fantastic job on Council's decision a couple of years ago to lock that rate. Our reserve will remain at five, uh, twenty-five percent, and, and I'll also go into the various other reserves as well that, uh, in the later slides. With that said, um, there's various key drivers going into our budget next year. Um, I am forecasting revenues to be flat, which we'll go into in subsequent slides. We have included seven police officers to this budget of the ten over higher positions that Council approved. The two point nine million dollar unfunded accrued liability is, um, in the budget as well. The P O A M O U expires end of June, and we are currently in negotiations, um, in updating that agreement. Plunge construction is due to end, uh, December, and operations to begin in January, and that includes six months of operations. We also include in the budget five point, it's really five point two, three million dollars worth of general fund capital projects in this budget. We also going to discuss, uh, public safety overtime. We are adjusting some of the overtime for next year as well. The budget also includes a five percent vacancy rate. We've historically been close to ten percent or higher, so we've historically used a five percent vacancy rate to, in a sense, balance the budget as well. So, that's in here. And lastly, as Daryl mentioned, I do foresee a structural deficit coming in three years or so, and we'll go into that specifics with the forecast as well. Let me begin with numbers. Uh, for all funds, revenues, we're looking at a hundred and eighty-five, uh, million, hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. The orange pie, uh, is the general fund. That's a hundred and four million dollars, or fifty-six percent of our, uh, revenues. And then the non-general fund, the blue pie, is eighty point six million dollars. Going to some of the specifics, and I won't touch on all of these items, Council, but, um, total uh, revenues, as I mentioned at the bottom, is a hundred and eighty-five million versus a hundred and seventy-five that we anticipate the end of the year, this year. General fund, um, last year was the first year that our revenues exceeded a hundred million dollars. And I do anticipate us to end this current fiscal year at a hundred and three million. And next year, I'm keeping it relatively flat at a hundred and four million dollars. The water fund line two, uh, we do expect an increase in water fund, and that's just really a pass-through of revenues, and at thirty-seven million dollars. Waste water also, um, is, uh, set to be six point two million dollars. If we were to, unless Council has specific questions, I'm dropping down to line eleven, the public safety special revenue.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Has the golf course finished repaying the, the equipment replacement fund? I know it's going at five hundred thousand dollars a year, thirty percent of the top golf revenue. Are we, are we fully repaid yet?
I.
Is that reflects that delta here, five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And also, senior housing, why is that off by eight hundred thousand dollars?
Ooh, I was going to get there, but I will let, oh, I'll answer that now. Uh, so, this year particularly, we had eight hundred thousand dollars set aside for some pipe work that was anticipated, but being that, um, Elias, uh, did the assessment, realized we didn't need that. So, that's just going back to its fund balance.
Very well, thank you.
Um, and then just line eleven, um, that's our COOPA fund, uh, and I know FIRE is coming to Council regards to A B fourteen, or, yeah, fourteen forty-six, and that's that, um, alert uh, notification to the community. And that, um, budget revenue piece is included in there. That's a four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase. That's reflected in there as well. And then also line thirteen, the Recreation and Economic Development Trust Fund. That big jump right there from one point one million to five point one, that's actually, majority of that is the five million dollar plunge fundraising revenue that's included in there. Um, now, let me just dive a little bit deeper into the general fund as, um, seventy percent of our, our services are covered under the general fund revenues. As I mentioned, overall, we're keeping it flat, Council. Uh, looking at bottom line total revenues, I am anticipating to end the year at a hundred and three point five million dollars. And looking into next year, I, of course, don't have a crystal ball, but, um, I forecasted a hundred and four point four million dollars going into next year, so one percent increase. And, um, just kind of touching on the various items here, sales tax, I do, uh, see that we're going to end the year at sixteen point eight, and I'm keeping it relatively flat next year. We just don't know, uh, regards to what the economic condition or weather will look like going into next year. I've had some various conversations with the South Bay Finance Directors, and they also, the word that keeps coming up is let's be, uh, conservative and cautious, the, the two Cs that keeps coming up. And I am also taking that route as well, being that what I see is just some unknowns going into next year. We won't see a decrease, at least that's what I do, I see, but I do anticipate to be flat to maybe a percent higher. Now, as Council knows, I do come to Council on a quarterly basis and during mid-year. So, if, I will, of course, notify the Council regards to how we are doing compared to our adopted budget, but also you have opportunity during mid-year to reevaluate the revenues and expenditures as well. Business license on line two, uh, I'm keeping it flat at fourteen point one million dollars. We are hea- hearing some, um, cuts on some of the corporate, um, businesses regards to headcount, so I wanted to, um, be sensitive to that as well. So, we're keeping that flat for next year. T O T, also keeping it flat at fourteen point eight million. Last time I've, uh, checked, we're, occupancy rate continues to be strong at eight, eighty-nine percent. But, um, looking into next year, as you know, the World Cup is coming along in July. Could we see a, a bump in T O T? Yes, but that'll be more for the following fiscal year, not for next year. So, I wanted to keep that flat. Property tax continues to, I, outshine for us on the revenue side, as, uh, El Segundo continues to be a desirable community. And even with high interest rates, we still anticipate, um, br- property tax to grow, at least at two percent. As you know, Prop, um, Prop thirteen limits the increase at two percent, and we do anticipate that. But one thing I do want to highlight to Council is that with the Palisades Fire and E- uh, Eaton Fire, we did see an impact, um, all agencies in, ke- the county of L A have seen that impact, meaning they've deferred some of those property taxes for a year. So, we might not see that for, until the second year. And that equates to approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's what our consultant calculated for us. But we will eventually collect that in the second, um, or fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I have a question for you. It's a little bit in the weeds, but Mayor Protem and I were over at Mattel the other day, and they were discussing year-round rentals for showrooms to, to showpiece things that happen twice a year. When someone rents out, if they take twenty thousand square feet, and they only occupy it for six weeks out of the year, are we capturing tax value on the headcount as it's based in those six weeks of operation? Extrapolate that year-round?
That is a good question. I.
Because they indicated that there would be substantial square footage taken over there by companies doing that, which seems, which is great, right? I mean, the occupancy goes up, but the utilization is relatively low. I mean, so if there's ten people who work there for six total weeks, do we get the same amount as if they worked there for fifty-two weeks? Very well.
Line five is our, our Chevron T R A. Um, that is due to expire September of twenty twenty-seven. And the reason I'm bumping that, uh, revenue up to six point one million, this is really a true-up payment, as it's calculated towards the end of fiscal, uh, beginning of the fiscal year, or, I'm sorry, in January, so calendar. January, when we recalculated with, uh, sales, with all the various taxes that Chevron pays, we make that true, true-up payment that we ask Chevron to pay. And being that we are anticipating some slight decreases in various taxes, we wanted to bump up that, um, true-up payment. And the true-up payment for next year is sixteen point one million dollars in total for the T R A payment. So, whatever that difference is, is what I'm budgeting for next year. Util user's tax, keeping it relatively flat going into next year. Uh, line seven and twelve, the charges for service and license and permits. After my conversations with the directors, they do see some volume slight decreases going into next year, so we wanted to account for that. But in license and permits, the reason you see a slight increase is, I am coming to Council, uh, two weeks from now, regards to our master, uh, fee schedule, and that includes a three point two percent C P I increase. So, we will see, um, uh, fees going up by that percentage, and that'll, that's what I will be proposing to Council, to recoup some of the cost due to inflationary cost. And lastly, line thirteen, interest and rental income. This is our, mainly our interest income line item, and the former city treasurer has done a fantastic job just laddering out our investments for three years, and even five years out, at four, four percent to even close to five percent. So, we'll see that benefit, um, for the next couple of years as well. Last slide for you, Council, for revenues. This is just looking at our top five revenue sources on the general fund side. Just working left to right, uh, you see, uh, pre-COVID, when revenues, um, were at that level, and then we, due to the closures, you saw a dip in our overall revenues, with property taxes continue to, continue to go up. That's that blue line in the middle. But post-COVID, you can see that most of our revenues have all, um, exceeded the, um, COVID, uh, depre- uh, recession levels that we were back in twenty twenty-one. And obviously, like, going into next year, I'm keeping those revenues flat, being that there's just various, um, unknowns going into next fiscal year. With that said, uh, let me jump into our appropriations or our expenditures. Overall, all funds appropriation is two hundred and nineteen million, eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. The orange pie is our general fund, and that's a hundred and four point nine million dollars. And the boob section of the pie is our non-general fund, and that's a hundred and fourteen point seven, or a hundred and fourteen point two million dollars. Regards to the various funds, um, on the appropriation side, um, I won't go through each and every one of these items, but at the top, the general fund is, uh, currently, our current budget is at ninety-seven point five million, going up to a hundred and four point nine million dollars. And as we kind of unravel this, uh, and get deeper into the onion, in a sense, um, I'll get to those details of what that's, that increase is, and what's contributing to those increases in the subsequent slides. Um, line third, uh, line three and transportation fund, um, it, we're going down from four million down to two, and that's just really driven by programming of CIPs utilizing transportation funds. On the, um, line eleven, public safety special revenue, that's that COOPA fund. So, we're including that call center or the, um, alerting system, which FIRE has included, and that, that's why you see that increase in expenditure next year. And then lastly, line thirteen, the Recreation and Economic Development Trust, um, you see that increase from a hundred and thirty-six thousand up to close to five million, and that's really the transfers out for the five million dollar fundraising for the plunge, that, that currently the general fund had loaned out to pay for that additional five million dollars. And eventually, when we collect that through fundraising, we'll pay that back to the general fund. Focusing on the general fund, Council, um, if you look at the total bottom line, as I mentioned, we're going from our current adopted budget of ninety-seven point five million up to a hundred and four point nine million dollars. That's a seven point six percent increase. And we'll go into the various, what is triggering or, or making those, uh, the budget increase by that amount. But just to kind of highlight a few items here, police at the top of the line, line one, they're increasing their budget by thirteen percent, and that's really driven by the seven police officers. But in there, they're also decreasing uh, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for, uh, the dispatch. So, current, in the current budget, all the dispatch. So current, in the current budget, all the dispatch budget resided in police only. But for next year, we're breaking that up and breaking it into fifty fifty percent, meaning fifty percent will reside with FIRE, and fifty percent will reside with police. So that's why you see a bigger increase in FIRE, as you can see in line two. FIRE's budget is going up by sixteen point four percent, but five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is from, moving from police departments to the FIRE department for the dispatch cost.
Do we know how much longer we have on that contract? Like three more years? Twenty, thirty? Oh, good, because last time it doubled in, in costs, so I'm glad that we can at least not sweat that for five years before it doubles again.
Going down to line five, non-departmental, that budget is increasing by ten percent, and that's driven by the U A L payment. That's distributed to the various departments. And also kind of going down to line nine, the city manager's budget is going up by eleven point nine percent. And we'll go into the specifics in the departmental budget summaries, but mainly it's unfreezing of the management analyst position. And also a hundred thousand dollar citywide staffing assessment that was requested to be added by the finance committee. Let me drill in a little bit deeper here, council, regards to what the general fund appropriations and what the increases are for. When we net out transfers, I'll, which the next slide will give you details of what that transfers out amount is. When you want, when we take that transfers out, because that's not actual cash hitting the general fund. The actual decrease in cash will be these three categories here, salaries, as I mentioned, salaries going up by five point two percent. And the main contributor is the seven police officers that we added to the budget. Retirements and benefits, that's going up by eighteen point three percent, and the main driver for that is that U A L payment of two point nine million dollars. And the last item, the Maintenance and Operations or M N O line item, that's going up by eight point eight percent. And the reason for that increase is we included six months of plunge. And also during this budget, we've, some of the departments added back the four percent cut that we did last year during the budget process. Some of those items were added back in for this budget coming up.
The U A L, don't we just pay that out of our pension trust though?
No, not the U A L payment.
That's what the pension trust is there for though, right?
Well, the pension trust is, is an option that we can utilize to pay that if we want to. At this time, it's not in here as we're using, dipping into the pension trust.
So we're using general fund dollars instead of the pension trust?
We can, that's a lever that we can't.
Look, it's your, 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 your business, and that's what you do. But don't invest in crypto. That investment will be wildly up right now. Can you imagine if we'd been, yeah, we wouldn't have U A L.
Regards to the transfers out budget, our total budget for next year is fifteen point one million dollars. That comprises of the debt service payment for the P O B, that's nine point five million dollars. We also, it also includes the C I P that's budgeted for next year at five point two million dollars. And the solid waste fund, this, this should have, these numbers should have been swapped, two hundred and eleven thousand is the solid waste fund portion. And then the two hundred thousand is for the senior housing fund. My apologies, that should have been swapped. And the reason for the solid waste fund being lower, we always historically budgeted three hundred thousand. But if you recall, council, we started to decrease our city subsidy for solid waste. So that's why we, yep, just wanted to bring that up. Moving on to F T Es or full-time equivalents for next year. Bottom line, we're total F T Es, three hundred and seventy-eight point seventy-one. So that's an increase of four point two four F T Es. On the, on the full-time side, we're at even three hundred, and that's an increase of six. As I mentioned, there's seven new police officers, but we've also decreased certain part-time positions, which the next slide we'll go into more detail. And then on the part-time side.
Hold on a second. I don't know if that is maybe something we should bring up in individual departments, but I'm, I'm a little confused as to how the headcount can only be in police. When we have the plunge coming online and there's a need for, as we discussed, a heck of a lot more employees. So is that going to be addressed in, in Ali's presentation?
In the department slides, yes. We will go into more detail there, but also the subsequent slide might also shed additional light there.
Okay.
And so the part-time is decreasing by one point seven six. So now just kind of maybe answer some of Councilmember Drew's question on F T count. But if we look at R P L, the first line up there at top, overall, slightly, basically flat, right, going down by point twenty-six. And maybe this kind of answers your question, Councilmember Drew, but two months of, of the year next year, the Aquatic Center is shutting down. And so what, because of that, the department did reallocate some of that, meaning they didn't hire, they're not going to hire as many lifeguards, because we're going to have two months being closed. And then of course, six months operations on the plunge side.
I don't, I don't think it answers it, but we can wait till we get to that department.
Okay. And unfortunately, R P L will be at the very end, but we'll get there.
Gives me enough time to get ramped up for it.
All right, sounds good. On the police side, as I mentioned, it's a, it's an increase of seven, but a decrease of point five, being that they, they are deleting a, a personnel officer. Which we'll go into more detail in the subsequent slides in the department slides. Also, on the community development side, they are decreasing two part-time code enforcement inspectors. Now on the finance side, we have, we're deleting a city treasurer who was previously elected, now is appointed position as well. Jumping into reserves, our reserves at twenty-five percent will be at twenty-four point nine million dollars. And as kind of going back to the original slides regards to various agencies struggling with their budget. Many are struggling at even keeping at ten percent reserve. And keeping at twenty-five percent, it just shows our strength of our overall finances here at the city. But also at the same time, G F O A, one of their, kind of the governing board, always asked to keep at least two months' worth of expenditures on the books. So we're doing a good job here, keeping our reserves. With that said, our economic uncertainty reserve will remain untouched at two million dollars.
This is a sort of council question. Is the economic, we had the economic uncertainty reserve hung out there when historically we were running a fifteen percent total reserve. So we had economic uncertainty there to be like the panic button. If we're going to keep this at a, for us, historically high reserve rate of twenty-five percent, is the economic uncertainty fund redundant? Because we're effectively utilizing the reserve for that purpose. Right? Is that just two extra million dollars? And it's, it's, and is there any benefit to having an extra account there? I mean, we're sequestering two million dollars that I don't think, it's like extra two million dollars we're hoarding.
When did that show up?
We, I mean, I think in two thousand eight-ish, I think, when we were, when the general fund was sixty-two million dollars. And then we had that two million dollars with the panic button, because we're keeping, keeping the reserve at like fifteen percent. But anymore, we're accomplishing economic uncertainty with a heightened level of reserve already. So I'm just wondering if that two million dollars is deployable, if it's superfluous.
Yeah, I agree. I was, that's actually in my notes on here, is that I, I know when that was put into place, it was at a very different time. And the goal was to try to get to twenty-five percent, but now that we're there, we're not a bank also. We gotta, we gotta take into consideration that we're going to need money for other things. So file that away, we may, if we, if we go looking for money in the budget, that, that, that might be a casualty.
When did the reserve go from fifteen percent to twenty-five?
I think like two years ago or something, I mean, really recent. Yeah, before we went to the, to the, to the bond, when we were prepping for the, the bond issue. And there was a lot of hand wringing, even to get it to twenty percent, we had a council member who was steadfast that we are hoarding the people's money and needed to deploy it.
Yeah, part of that triple A rating that the city has is hinges kind of on that twenty-five percent reserve, just kind of shows the health of the organization. But of course, it's like having a personal credit score of eight hundred and fifty. What good is that if you don't leverage that and maybe potentially borrow money? Same thing here for the city as well. If keeping that triple A rating, great, but as you know, we have low debt. And so could that be another lever potentially in the future that we can utilize for getting debt? It's a, it's an avenue that we can look at.
And the O P E B, is that, are we still fully funded?
O P E B is not fully funded, no.
Okay, so that's a change, because it was fully funded as of, that just because of market performance?
Yes, yes. And I will have that update as we usually conduct that, and I'll probably come back in September to get you an update on that. And pension trust reserve, that's at six point three million dollars. And lastly, our general fund C I P reserve untouched at four hundred thousand dollars. All right, this is a slide that I present to the council, regards to just kind of giving you a picture of where we're at. Regards to how we're going to start the year or the fiscal year and how we're going to end the fiscal year. So there's a lot of variables and, and estimates in here, but regards to how we're going to start the fiscal year, we're going to start at thirty-three point one million dollars. And that July first, twenty twenty-five, I should have said twenty twenty-five, not twenty-six. But we're going to start July first, twenty twenty-five, an estimated thirty-three point one million dollars. The revenues for next year, as I mentioned, a hundred and four point five million dollars. The expenditures will be at ninety-nine point seven million, and that's excluding the C I P. So our estimated ending fund balance will be thirty-seven point nine million. With that reserve that we talked about, the twenty-five percent, we want to set aside twenty-four point nine million dollars. That's going to give you an estimated ending unassigned fund balance at twelve point nine million dollars. Now that number seems high, but I wanted to kind of go into more details regards to this. We have, out of this twelve point nine, we're funding five point two million dollars of C I P out of there. We also have our P O A negotiations. We also potentially be going into other M O U negotiations in the future. But lastly, what's the most kind of big-ticket item is our C I Ps. Part of the staff packet, Exhibit E, includes your five-year C I P. And when we look at the general fund C I P that's be funded for the next five years, you're looking at thirty-five million dollars worth of C I P funds. Needed to support these C I Ps. So we want to make sure we take into that into consideration. Now let me bring up the forecast going into, to next year, but looking out five years. Next year, the blue line, blue, blue line, blue table really is our revenues, and an orange is our expenditures. As we don't have any new revenue sources in the pipeline, I do feel that we will be balanced next year, even though it's a conservative outlook on revenues. Our expenditures are what our expenditures are, depending upon what council directs staff. But even in the second year of twenty-six, twenty-seven, we should, we should have a balanced budget. That's looking at another C I P of four point six million dollars in that fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Now I wanted to highlight on fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, this is when I foresee a potential structural deficit. Meaning our operating revenues won't cover our operating expenditures. And then even in that year, we have over six point four million dollars of C I P programmed in this forecast. And as you can see on the gray line, that's our fund balance, and it will continue to dip into that fund balance. As we don't have any new revenue sources kind of supporting that fund balance. And just going out all the way to the fifth year, as you can see, it will continue to go negative, and our deficit will continue to grow. Now, one of the input that finance committee asked me to provide was a ten-year forecast. And when things were bad, the five years, it gets worse as we look out ten years. As you can see, the orange line grows bigger, of course, and faster than our revenues. And my forecast includes a four percent revenue growth for the next, what, ten years? But an expenditure growth at seven percent. So with that said, the, as you can see, our, our overall fund balance, that gray line, it gets to a point where it goes so negative that I couldn't really put it on this chart without making the chart so small. And really, if you, if the number is a hundred and fifteen million dollars in the red fund balance, if we were to pay for all the C I Ps for the next ten years. And we have no new revenue sources driving increased revenues.
Paul, what's, what are the primary drivers for the seven percent?
I looked at historic, I looked back five years, but also looked, took into consideration U A L. As you, U A L is going to probably be, our pension cost is going to really drive our expenditure looking out in the next five to ten years. We have a P O B payment of ten million, right, nine point five million dollars we budget. You have your regular contribution as an employer, but then you layer on top of U A L, which is two point nine next year. Forecast to continue to go up half a million to a million, depending upon how CalPERS performs, right? So you're looking at almost twenty percent of our overall general fund expenditures just on pension costs. So that's something is in this forecast.
And in the five-year forecast, what percent of negotiated M O Us are built in versus unrealized or not even determined yet?
The only thing I included in this five-year forecast, and of course a ten-year, because it just piggybacks off of the five, is, is the P O A M O U. Number is in there. I just put a placeholder in there, but that's it for four years. But I did not put in any other inflator regards to any anticipated new contracts for M O Us. That assumption is just too difficult for me to figure out.
So Paul, if it's pension obligations, then even if we had hiring flat for the next five years, you would expect to see that same increase in liabilities?
Yes, definitely.
So we can't even cut our way out of this, basically, we can't. Even if we start decreasing and downsizing, the pension obligations are continued to grow year after year.
The unfunded accrue liability, that U A L, yes, because that's really for all retirees, but also potential new retirees. But really hinges upon the performance at CalPERS. And hence, a lot of the agencies that you see that are having trouble balancing their budget, it's really driven by their U A L. And we are handcuffed to CalPERS and their performance. And so it's difficult, but yes, to answer your question, if we, even if we were to hire more, and we just kept it at zero hiring, our U A L will continue to rise, yes. Okay, certain revenue options that the council, of course, can consider. And, and I think what I'm hearing is that many agencies that are having difficulty balancing their budget, they've already kind of pulled most of their levers they can. They maximize their sales tax, they maximize maybe T O Ts, of course, they can increase their T O T, but that will of course have an adverse effect if they increase too much. Utility user tax, but for here at El Segundo, the council has been very conservative. And, and so our sales tax, it says nine point five as of, as of April, due to Measure A, it went up another quarter, so we are actually at nine point seven five. One of the lowest in L A County. Of course, Measure C, if we were to put that in place, that will bring in additional nine million dollars a year for the general fund. T O T, as you know, it's at twelve percent of the T O T rate, one of the lowest in L A County as well. One percent increase will bring an additional million dollars approximately. Utility user tax currently hovers at three percent, but depending upon which utility user tax we increase, whether it be gas, electricity, water. And a, a one percent increase, you're probably looking at half a million to a million dollar increase annually as well. And lastly, the T R A, Chevron T R A agreement is come to expire as September twenty-seven. And that's something that's would potentially bring in additional revenue as well to the general fund. With that said, I just, the last few slides are really just all other funds, as it's not only the general fund that, that we have. So just wanted to cover for the council some of the other funds that are non-general fund. Our debt service fund, as I mentioned, we have two debts on the books. The Douglas Street gap closure fund balance is at four point eight million dollars. The final payment is due August first of twenty thirty-five. Pension obligation bond.
Can we preemptively name that George Hoops Day? Because that, he hated that thing so much, that it's got to be, we put a statue up and we break a champagne bottle when we finally done with that thing?
And then the pension obligation bond, currently fund balance is a hundred and twenty point six million dollars. Our annual payment is nine point seven, nine point eight. And lastly, it matures in June twenty forty. Some of the special revenue funds that we budgeted, transportation is two million dollars, the public safety revenue fund or Coupa Fund is three point one million. The special revenue funds, other remaining special revenue funds, because there's various other special revenue funds, is one point three million. And the senior housing fund, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars, so a total of six point five million dollars in the special revenue funds. The, our enterprise fund, our water and wastewater, our water fund remains healthy at fifty-two point four million dollars. And our wastewater fund is not as healthy as our water fund, it's sitting at eleven point one million dollars. We are anticipating a rate study for water and wastewater next fiscal year, so that will be coming forth to council as well. And last slide, before we go into our departmental budgets, our equipment replacement fund. And last slide before we go into our departmental budgets, our equipment replacement fund, fund balance is at $18.7 million. This is where we pay all our vehicles and our equipment, and we set aside funds for, to pay for. And lastly, the two funds, general liability and workers' comp fund, those are in the deficit, meaning in the red. $7.3 million for general liability, and workers' comp is at $4 million. And it's been in the deficit for the past 10 years. So this is something we do want to tackle eventually, when we want to kind of patch this hole back up eventually if the cities had additional revenues to cover. Just wanted to remind the council that we did have a, council did approve a resolution to look into other risk pools, which I believe HR and the finance, the risk manager is looking into currently to see if we can go to a different risk pool that might have a cost factor as well. So something to consider as we go through that process, and we'll come back to council in a future date to give you what that fiscal impact potentially might be.
Paul, when you say general liability, you mean lawsuits filed against the city?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and workers' comp are also lawsuits filed by workers for injuries, correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
Hey, Paul, what's the interest that we're paying on that coupon for the Douglas Street?
I'll be honest, I do not know that.
I guess the question is, is it more or less than what we're earning as a city? Because we might want to consider paying that off, I don't know if we've contemplated that before.
I could find that out and give you an update, but I'm not sure what that interest is. Yeah, I don't want to assume anything. I'll find out. With that said, that kind of covers the first section, kind of the $30,000 level. Any final questions before we go into the departmental budgets?
We're doing the capital improvements last, does that include the plunge?
Yes.
Okay, so just to set the stage, by sitting on the Aquatics Center Subcommittee, I've been looking at the change orders. We are already at $800,000 in change orders. Because the pool tiles are no longer watertight, those may have to be replaced. Just to replace the tile is another $800,000 of costs. Our commitment to raise $5 million, which is in this budget, to date, I think it's 1.8? That's been raised. So at the end of this budget session, I think it would be conservative for us to have $2 to $3 million set aside to finish this project, and that doesn't, that is just for construction. That is to open the doors, that doesn't include the staffing. So not to be Debbie Downer here today, but the realities are, if we're already at 800, there's a change order on the horizon for another 800, we can expect the cost to continue to increase.
I think we can expect that pool to have a nice cement bottom and not tile.
Well, it'll be a conversation, I just, you know.
Not much of one.
Based on what I've seen and my experience in public works construction, I think we need to have in the back of our minds that if we don't raise those funds, it's coming out of our general fund. The contractor doesn't work for free, we have to pay those obligations within this next budget year, so just food for thought. Thanks, Paul.
No, no problem. All right, well, with that said, let me jump into the departmental budgets. Couple of items before we begin, council. The format will be very similar. We'll start with your budget, the city council's budget. But as you can see on the right top is a table that I provide the council. The first line is what's proposed for next year. You have the total expenditure, and then you go into personnel budget, and then the MNO budget, and any kind of positional changes as well. And the second line is our current adopted budget. And then the third line is just the change, what's going up, what's going down, to give you an idea. And also below that, I highlighted for the council, instead of going to all the various details of whether it be a CPI increase and whatnot, I wanted to highlight to the council, what are the big trigger items that are added to this budget that's increasing your budget? We also, part of the staff report included in Exhibit, I believe Exhibit A, provides you the budget line items for each of the departments. So that all ties in with these tables as well to give you additional detail. With that said, City Council, your budget is proposed to be $227,000 next year. It's a slight increase of 1%. On the personnel side, it's a slight increase due to CalPERS pension contribution. But the main increase is $2,000 or 4% for your increase in operating supplies. So your current operating supply budget is $3,000, it's going up to $5,000. And what I was told was that it's due to this various, what was it? Supplies in water, coffee, drinks, and other items. And inflation, due to inflation, because we haven't adjusted for inflation here at cost, so.
You get one drink a week, one drink a week.
The Diet Coke today does cost more than the Diet Coke last year, so that's something. The aluminum might have a tariff, but it's up to that. And one thing, council- And one thing, council, that any changes, what's proposed to you this afternoon is what's gonna be in your proposed budget that I'm coming back to council with. So any kind of changes, if you don't make any changes, that's what I'll be bringing back to the council at June 3rd. Just wanted to highlight that again. Next department is City Attorney. So City Attorney's budget, it proposed for next year is $825,000, and it's a decrease from our current year's budget of $72,000 or 8%. And my discussion with our City Attorney is that he just anticipates less litigation, labor negotiations, and code enforcement costs. So he did lower and adjust that budget accordingly. City Clerk's budget, for next year, it's proposed to be $596.7,000, and it's actually a decrease from our current year's budget. And on the personnel side, you see a slight increase, that's just due to COLA increases. But the main increase is in their MNO, and the reason for that decrease is, of course, we don't have an election year next year. So they're decreasing or taking that $80,000 election budget out of their budget for next year. But of course, it doesn't really equal dollar-for-dollar, being that there's other items that are increasing, such as contractual agreements and whatnot.
On that, for the Clerk's budget, there is, it's, there's a huge delta too on the professional and technical. Like, we're budgeting $56,000, we're spending 20, and then it bounces over to 7, I think?
I do have that detail, and I might be able to-
Or it goes up to 107, sorry. Oh, sorry, this is in the supporting documents, this is page 7.
Just getting into it.
130.
Pages deep, I love it.
Councilmember Boils, I just got an update that Douglas, the debt is 2.87%. I'm sorry, Mayor, you mentioned what's-
The professional and technical for the clerk?
Yes.
We budgeted 56, we spent 20, but then we're budgeting 107? Or sorry, we ended up with 107,000? And that's, that's not, does not appear to be election-related.
Let me get to elections, actually. Unless Susan, you know, but let me just-
Line 6214 in your hearts.
Looking at the, because I see on, for City Clerk-
We adopted a budget of 107 on a prior year of '22, and then we're projecting it at 32. Is, but it's, is the technical, professional and tactical, is that election stuff? I mean, the number looks around there, just in a different area. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Oh, and to, I'm following at the exhibit that you're referring to, Mayor, and yes, it does also include that $80,000 that was included this year, but then not included next year. And that's why you see that big increase and then a decrease next year. All right, the next department is the City Managers. The total budget for next year is $3.1 million, and that's an increase of $333,000 or 12%. And so when we look at personnel, there's a couple of things increasing in the City Manager's budget. There was a frozen position last year, but has been unfrozen during mid-year this year. And the management analyst, which was converted from a, it should say executive assistant, not a senior executive assistant, but an executive system was converted during mid-year to a management analyst. And now we've included that budget, the management analyst, and that cost is $129,000. And that's what's really driving the personnel budget increase for City Manager. And everything else is just a COLA increase and benefits. On their MNO budget, it's 1.1 million, and going up by 179,000. So let me just highlight for you, council, what's triggering that increase. First one is the employee engagement budget. That was $100,000 that the council authorized a couple of years ago. Used to reside in HR, but 60,000 of it is being moved to the City Manager's budget, and 40,000 is staying at HR. So once we get to the next slide, HR, you'll see a decrease, but you'll see a 60,000 increase in City Manager. There's various other items that's contributing to the increase. State, federal lobbyists, they're adding $36,000, but decreasing the strategic planning session facilitator of $10,000. You know, Barbara is also increasing for some of the economic development programs, such as the Sidebar Summit Redwood Collective for $25,000, some new programming for the Tech Breakfast Club for $27,000, and then advertising publishing for marketing promotions for major events, and that's $30,000 that's added to the budget. Last bullet here, council, is that this was citywide assess, of staffing assessment. This was asked by the Finance Committee to be added to the City Manager's budget. And so that's currently $100,000 that's in the budget.
Is our printing and binding, is that just media, is that just marketing stuff? Because we went from spending $1,000 a year on it to $13,000 a year. 6205, maintenance and operations. While I've got, is that lobbyist, is that Consalves?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's another, you know, they've got a particular expertise in DTSC, and there's some issues with DTSC at the 1320 Franklin, right there where Smokey Hollow Industries is building. They've got another kerfuffle with that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, so printing and binding, we do print out copies of the net promoter survey or the community survey that we send out to about 1,000 residents, so that's part of it. Those are the residents for whom we do not have email addresses, and we are actively trying to collect email addresses, and every year that number is going down and email addresses are going up. But it is a need, especially for seniors who aren't regularly checking email.
I'm gonna ask the dumb question, are we sending that out to someone to print? Or are we using any of our amazing Manolka printers? I would hope so.
All-in-house this year, but we have in the past used a printing house. And then other printing is if we need a banner printed or something for an event or some sort of display of our logo or whatever, step and repeat, which is a big thing that would go behind us, that would come out of that budget.
And we only want to do the two events? This is where I will stump for, in an era where Silicon Valley seems to be running the federal government, it would just seem to be, if that has been enormously effective for us restarting all of Smokey Hollow with a 0% occupancy on tech stuff, it would seem that this would be a time to keep that pipeline open.
That is my question, has it, are those two things linked? Are us doing these events linked to occupancy in Smokey Hollow?
At that tech breakfast, I mean, the ABL spa got rented while we were at the tech breakfast, right? I mean, it is, it is, I mean, that thing was packed.
At the Disciplis event, not the last one we sponsored, but the one, yeah, before, two or three companies came out of that event just by hosting cohorts that are now based in El Segundo as well.
Actually, Councilmember Boils, I was gonna just send you an email on that, just for the group. I did speak to the organizer of that event, and he said two additional companies were moving in as a result of the second cohort. And he has the names, I forget what they are.
But we might lose Durin if we don't, we get, because we gotta find him a place with a 16-foot door.
Yeah. So the $25,000 is for two events, and the two events are run by Sidebar Summit, which is a group out of the Silicon Valley. It's a person who runs a family fund and invests in various venture capitalists, or capital companies. And he knows the founders of these companies and the key players in the VC world. And he brings those people to the events, and that, and in turn attracts a lot of startup companies who are looking for investors. So the connections are made there for the companies that are startup to get funding. And then once they get their funding, they are looking for a location and leasing space, and then hopefully they continue to grow. And our challenge that we're facing right now is, you know, they're pre-revenue, they're startups, fantastic, it's exciting. But we want them here when they're actually making money and growing and hiring people and creating excellent jobs. So that is something that we've been trying to get over, that hurdle of, okay, you're a startup here, we want you to stay and grow here. The events have been effective in terms of bringing people together, meeting a lot of startups, a lot of VCs, getting a lot of attention around El Segundo, and that's the purpose. So it's effective, we're doing two events for $25,000.
Barbara, it just occurred to me when I was looking at this list, I think you've done a great job. The, we haven't done anything with Tech Week LA necessarily formally, nor Deep Tech Week, which was started here in El Segundo.
Oh, we had an event at LA Tech Week, remember?
No, I mean, we don't have anything, I'm saying we don't have any funds set aside, is what I'm saying, for that, on a go-forward basis.
We didn't call it out specifically, but yeah, we are-
We have discretion to do, because those things are, like, the one that was done last year for Deep Tech Week was really successful as well, a lot of people came here from outside El Segundo.
So we are sponsoring Deep Tech Week this year. We didn't sponsor it last year, we just helped to facilitate everything. So we're a named sponsor with all the associated benefits of that. We're gonna have, most of the whole program for the week is gonna be in El Segundo, yeah.
Innovate LA, that book, did I send you that yet? Did I send the book thing? They want to feature El Segundo in the Innovate LA book, but you're obligated to buy 10 copies or something. It's like 1,500 bucks. So take that out of the soda budget for the City Council.
Just on a separate note, not budget-related, but I just got a call last week from Joel Kotkin, who writes in New York Times, Wall Street Journal. He's got a website with over 250,000 followers. Anyway, he's doing a big article on communities or cities that are attracting these high-tech folks and space-related investors, and El Segundo is one of the cities he wants to highlight. And I think it's El Segundo, Dallas, and New York, I mean, it's a pretty big city, so we're meeting with him, in fact, tomorrow. And in fact, if you'd like to be on that call, either, you know, I know it's been one of your interests, to be happy to plug you into that, so we're certainly getting the word out, anyone else that's interested.
Can I ask, is the amount for full-time salaries, that includes someone to replace our public relations? Diane Chavon is along with us, I know there was a temp there for a while, but I haven't seen anyone in that position. Are we considering, what are we doing with that? Or is that gonna be assumed with this new analyst that we're bringing in?
No, 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 no. So I had the clever idea of reducing that position to a senior management analyst to kind of save money and hopefully have someone growing with the organization up to manager. We did a lot of interviews, and I couldn't find the right person. So now we're reopening it as a communications manager position, and that's gonna be open, I think, this week or next, and we will fill that position. The idea behind the management analyst position is that they would be different from an executive assistant in that they would have analyst-level work that they would be doing for communications as well as economic development to sort of round out that team a little bit more and have more emphasis on those two disciplines.
So those are two full-time positions we need to fill.
Yes, sir.
A question about the state and federal lobbyists, what types of activities are they engaged on for us currently? Or what's proposed for the year?
Certainly, initially, we retained this lobbyist to help us with the legislation through Assemblymember Marasucci's office to get the bill passed that would affect. I think that goes into effect soon in terms of requiring Hyperion to monitor, to install the monitoring stations and keep those effective. Really, this was kind of a catch-all for any issues related- Really, this was kind of a catch-all for any issues related between, that they're coming out of Sacramento. And I think really this effort here would be to help us monitor and also impact legislation related to all of these housing bills that are now coming out of Sacramento. And really, they're on call for anything else that the council feels we need either assistance or direction or advice or monitoring through or advocating for legislation in Sacramento. And I think that's what this lobbyist would do. They're very well-respected, the Gonzalez team. And we thought that this would be a way of, again, keeping us apprised of everything that's going on on a little more intimate level in Sacramento.
Thank you. And I know we have, I think we have a Hyperion update coming up on a council meeting agenda. There may be some conversation about how we could get them engaged on things in addition to what they've been working on with the fence line monitoring.
Absolutely.
That, just because Councilmember Keldor brought it up, I mean, I'm not in favor of retaining them just to monitor because we have Contract Cities, which I'm on the board of, COG, which he's on the, you're on the board of, SCAG, which I'm on the regional council of, Cal Cities, where we have great representation. They're all doing the same thing, they're paying Gonzalez and others to monitor the same bill. So I know it's only thirty-five thousand, to me, that is not a good use. We're just replicating things that are already being done. We all have the same concerns, there's very few nuances, except for what Councilmember Keldor brought up about Hyperion that are specific to us. Otherwise, we all have the same concerns. We have a legislative framework that your department spent a lot of time on. And I would rather spend that money for something that is objective-based. Like, we are going to finally get action with Hyperion. We're going to pressure them into getting a plant manager despite spending a year and a half on this with no results. We're going to get them to own this, you know, and so to me, that's a better use of funds than just having a lobbyist and retainer that's going to give us the same information we're getting from all these other agencies.
I think it can do, it can do both, right? We get out of it what we want. And if we say, look, this is, we're going to retain you, and we don't need you to read the weather to us. We want you to go accomplish these things. It's just easier to do that when you have them retained than when you go fishing for it. And part of it, and my experience with them in the past was, one of the strong things is they can tell you, like, well, what does this bill mean to you? You know, not as a region, but as an individual city, and here is who was actually making the decision on that bill. Otherwise, I think that sometimes we get a sense that our letters are just sort of put in the stack of letters to the editor.
My point is, retainers, there's no motivation, having hired people on retainers before to get anything done. If you're on a retainer, you're on a retainer. So I was just asked that we have some specific milestones in place. What are we looking to achieve, by what timeframe? Because retainer is open-ended, and they typically don't get revisited.
Any objections to making this instead of a retained engagement, a programmatic engagement?
No, I agree with Councilmember Boyle. I think that the Gonzalez firms was fundamentally needed when we had a bill that we were pushing through, and we need to go up and testify, and we need to follow up and have meetings with AQMD about what would they agree to, what they would not agree to. But as far as the housing bills, those are going to be non-stop. I have a list of bills that I'm going to ask the city to just oppose. And a lot of them came through the emails and the resources we have and meeting with Senator Allen's office and saying, what are the bad bills and what can we do about it? I don't think just having someone on a retainer serves a direct purpose. But if there are action items that we want, then I think we should individually hire them for those purposes. So I think we should probably try to save the thirty-six just for a retainer. And if we can come up with something specifically for Hyperion or something for the state legislature that directly impacts El Segundo, the housing bills are going to be there. They're going to continue to shove that down our throats. I just don't see the return on the investment of having the retainer.
Can I suggest this then? Why don't we keep the line item in the budget? And if we have something that we want to use it for, then we program it for that.
Yeah, that works fine. So I'm sorry, I got a question here. The, and I was either absent that day or not paying attention, either one of them could be true. The citywide staffing assessment at a hundred thousand dollars, so.
No one's talked to you about that yet.
No. What is this? Like, I understand what it is, it's a third party that comes in and tells you whether you have too many people or not enough, right? So was that, was that on an agenda that I wasn't paying attention to?
No, that came up.
Why is it on here?
It came up in our finance meeting. Because we have a consultant right now looking at our aquatics programming, the staffing of aquatics, the cost to go with aquatics. And during finance, it was suggested, when's the last time the cities looked at the overall structure of staffing and employees and the departments? And what would that cost for us to do that? Kind of what we're trying to do for the aquatics programming piece of it? How do you staff it, where the positions, what is it going to cost us? Have someone come in outside to look at all these different departments and look at what we have historically done and see are there efficiencies that can be had there? And the flip side is, maybe some departments are understaffed, but we don't know. And so that's why this is, this is on there.
I get it. I guess my thing is, what are the parameters on? Because if you have someone that comes in and says, God, you got too many people. All right, well, that's an easy thing, right? As a councilor, then you can sit there and say, well, fine, you know, I know there's union contracts that are involved, but okay. What if that person comes in and says, wow, you are wildly understaffed. Are we willing to pull the trigger the other way? Because if we're not, that's a waste of a hundred thousand dollars, in my opinion.
I hear you. I think the scope is something more akin to, we're looking to save money as an organization, knowing that we have a structural deficit, help us achieve that versus just doing an open-ended, give us an assessment. More of a top-down, because we don't have a zero-based budget, and we've talked about that for years. So we don't really know from an activity-based costing standpoint, how many people we should have in our department. We know based on what we've done historically. And so the idea is to have an outside firm look at our organization with an objective of cost savings.
Okay, but I think as we talked about earlier on, I mean, our issue really is not, I mean, the size of the issue coming ahead of us is not a matter of a few headcount. The size of the issue, the problem is, is that we need new revenue resources. We need new revenue sources, we need to be able to generate a hell of a lot more. And I don't, I just don't fundamentally believe you can cut your way to prosperity. You have to increase your revenues. And I get it, I just think that a hundred thousand dollars for an entire city, I, I'm lost on this one, to be honest.
Part of this also, I think one of the first questions I asked when I came on board is, can somebody show me all of the positions that we have in the city? What's filled, what's not, where? So that doesn't exist electronically, there's actually no way. Every single department would have to create that from scratch, and they can. And it can be part of a comprehensive, to me, this group, it's not necessarily about costs, about cutting or adding. It's a global picture of what it looks like, maybe what it could potentially look like five years down the road. Do we have the right, right number of people in the right spots? How are we maximizing what we're doing? I, I think this is a, it's an investment, it's a big investment. But it's something that otherwise we are playing whack-mole in how we fill positions, what is vacant? What is, one gets hired, one gets, I see it as a bigger picture.
I think these are wildly successful programs in private industry. I don't know how it relates to a city government. I just, I, and I, guys, if I could see what this person is proposing and how they're going about it and what the parameters are and what we can and cannot do based on it, it might make more sense to me. But I, I mean, this is a big hit. I mean, look, you got employees in this room, and when you look at that in an environment that we're in right now, are you a person who sits there and says, wow, I'm not really sure if this is a place I'm going to be staying at if I have another opportunity somewhere else if they're spending a hundred thousand dollars to look if we have a streamlined organization? I look at the fact that this is your job.
Right. Well, we, if we do move forward.
Can I weigh in here before you even do? Look at the state, the state has borrowed for two years in a row, they have continued. They've added something like twenty-five to thirty percent headcount since the governor has been in office. There's no incentive, unfortunately, and be really candid here, for the executive in charge to make headcount reductions. It's really unpopular, I've had to do it myself. It's not fun, private or public sector. But we have not looked at this holistically from an outsider's standpoint to see how we're doing as organization. And to say that there's no room to cut indicates that there is no room to cut, and we don't know that. We can't keep increasing expenses and everything we're going to push down to the consumer. That's what's happening in the state of California. Businesses are leaving, you're in business, businesses are leaving. People say that's not true, that is absolutely true, businesses are choosing to leave the state. People are choosing to leave the state. We're spending more money relative to the budget that we have based on people and growing headcount. So it would behoove us, it's just being a fiscal steward to say, are we really staffed the right way? Because guess what, I've been up here seven, nine years, we've never done that in nine years. Nine years, we have not looked at our organization and said, how are we staffed? All we do is say, year after year, we're going to zero-based budget, we've never done that. That's what I'm asking for.
Can I propose that we leave it in there, and then it's going to come back to define the scope for council, right? Isn't that like the next logical step here? You would give direction from all of us.
Yes, I was going to add that in response to Councilmember Jeru's comments.
But before we get there, so you mentioned a couple of things. You mentioned that the state has done a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in headcount. The city of El Segundo, have they done a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in headcount over the same time? I think our problem has been retention and attraction. So I don't think you can compare it to that. You also mentioned being good financial stewards. We just literally, and we're going to talk about it later, talked about how we're literally robbing, not robbing, borrowing from the general fund to fill a pool because we spent money we didn't have to build it. That's not being good financial stewards either. So I think we have to be consistent on what we're doing up here. And we can't just justify an action because it's popular or a legacy and then overlook things like this.
We go on and on with the debate about how we got into the situation we are right now. The reason we don't have any money for capital improvements is because we spent a lot of money on personnel relative to our overall budget. And we kicked that can for like twelve years. So let's see what the scope comes back with. I think you've assured everyone on council that we're going to have an opportunity to look at the scope for this project anyway.
Absolutely, yes. If we do move forward with this assessment, Paul and I will work on the scope, present it to the finance committee, and then ultimately to the council if you'd like, before it gets sent out through the RFP process.
Very well. Anything else on city manager budget?
There's actually a second slide for city manager, but it's a decrease. I know there was a lot of conversation.
We should have showed this slide first.
There is a decrease, though. So regards to decreases, it's just really moving one budget to another department. But software, we're moving the hot suite and site, hut suite, sorry, hut suite and site improve software budget from city manager to the IT. So the way we budget software is that first year, if it's a new software, we budget it in the department. And then the subsequent years, we move that budget out of the department and put it with IT because they oversee the ongoing costs for the IT budget or for the software budget. There's a decrease due to one-time operating supplies for ES Media Studio that was done this year. So they don't need that budget next year. And then just a slight decrease for that social media monitoring service that was budgeted this year. But the city manager does not need that next year, so deleting that line item. All right, finance, treasury. My department's budget is two point eight million dollars. That's a slight increase of two percent. On the personnel side, you do see a decrease in our budget. And that's, as I mentioned, it's the city treasurer position now being an appointed versus an elected position. I am asking the council to potentially upgrade my license permit specialist from a one to a two. That's a two, six thousand dollar increase in the budget. And really, that person, I feel that there'll be a good return on investment, being that that person will be overseeing film permits. Also, some of the accounts receivable, some of the business license renewals, when that happens in January, it gets really busy. So I feel that that person can actually expand their role and help out with the department as well. On the M and O budget, I'm asking council to add back fifty thousand dollars. This was part of that four percent cut from last year. Our ERP system was just being implemented, so I felt that we didn't need that additional fifty thousand for temporary services, meaning when my staff is involved in this implementation, which at times it takes seven, eight hours of their day. Their job, their other duties have to get done, bills have to get paid, payroll has to get done. So part of this temp is to help just do the day-to-day and continue our finance operations. So I am asking council to add fifty thousand back in for my budget next year. And then the second item is just GASB eighty-seven ninety-six, that really just is leasing. It's a requirement that the GASB has required agencies to report on any kind of leases. And so that reporting, we do, we're asking for additional five thousand because of the additional cost to do the reporting. And position-wise, as I mentioned, FT, we are decreasing that FT by one for next year.
Paul, with the new ERP system, what kind of automation or streamlining benefits can we expect from AR and AP within your department? Because typically, when software is being sold, it's always realized with some savings somewhere.
Yes. I would say when we originally came to council for that new upgrade, as you know, our current financial system was going to get obsolete. I think that was our main driver, it wasn't really about efficiency. That was number one. Number two was regards to, we are currently in month four of our implementation. We are looking at other avenues, streamlining processes, such as currently, there's a lot of paper being passed around. So there's ways to digitize it and make it more efficient. Now, does that constitute headcount at this point? Not really, it's more of just being, operating more efficiently. And on top of that, saving staff time so that they can do other duties that were on top of what their current duties are. So to answer your question, council member, I think it's still too early to kind of give you a definite, is there going to be an efficiency savings on headcount versus kind of efficiency overall operating on processing, whether it be invoices, cash receipts? We just bought two scanners so that we no longer have to have paper on file somewhere. So that could potentially lead to savings instead of sending it to Iron Mountain to store files physically. It's all digitized, digital files cost a lot less than having physical files. So there is savings there, but it's not really, at this point, a headcount savings. At least, that's not what I see so far, four months into implementation. We're looking at an eighteen-month to a two-year implementation. So I think as we get closer on implementation and we go live, I think I will give you a better update on if there's potential, you know, savings on efficiency on headcount.
Something I've forgotten, I'm not sure if this goes under city manager or city attorney, but having my notes, maybe Joaquin, you can weigh on this. If we want to do, move ahead with going to the voters on Charter City that we were exploring, or if we have changes or amendments to like Measure BT, do we have to wait till 2026 for that election cycle? And if not, if we do it this year, do we need to reflect it in the budget?
For Charter, it would be, it would be twenty-six.
November of twenty-six?
Yes.
And what about for tax reform? Like, we wanted to change some verbiage on Measure BT?
That should go concurrently in the next November unless there is a special election for whatever reason.
Is that a significant budgetary cost?
Usually, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, that's significant budgetary cost, okay, thank you. We'll wait till twenty-six for that.
No other questions on finance, so move on to HR's budget. HR's budget next year is proposed to be two point one million dollars. It's actually a decrease of a hundred and thirty-five thousand or six percent decrease. On the personnel side, really, this is just a budgetary, I guess, in a way, update, meaning that we typically budget positions at a step C. But as the department had vacancies and when that person, a position leaves at a higher step, of course, we balance the budget back down to a step C. We budget them at a step C. So we see that lower budgetary need for next year. And also, new hires are starting at a lower step than the budgeted step C. So you see that little savings there for next year. On the M and O budget side, as I mentioned, there is that hundred thousand dollar employee engagement money. That sixty thousand moved to city manager, so forty thousand stays with HR. But you see that decrease there of sixty thousand. Also, a decrease in professional and technical for some of the legal services. The director felt that they didn't need as much budget next year, so you see a decrease of forty-seven thousand. But then there is an offset, meaning an increase of thirty thousand for employee physical as the department is conducting a lot more physical, and that cost is reflected in next year's budget as well.
I'm sorry, like a health physical?
No.
You're talking like background checks and everything we have to do for the hiring process?
Yes, exactly. These are for the pre-employment physicals. So every time we hire a rec leader or a lifeguard, it's three hundred and six dollars just for the physical portion of it. And we were trending higher than normal for this year. And with the plunge coming online, we're going to be hiring thirty, forty more lifeguards, so we need more money in our fiscal budget. So we need more money in our fiscal budget.
Any other questions on HR? Nope. All right. Information systems. The department's overall budget next year is $4.1 million. That's an increase of 5% for next year. On the personnel side, they're asking for a reclassification, a senior network assistant to a information systems specialist. That reclassification cost is $77,000. And the department's need for that is really driven by just the various complexities of, of software and hardware, cloud-based, as we continue to use more technology in our, at city hall, throughout city hall. And so they felt that they needed more of a technician in a specialized position to be able to account for those needs in that department and hence asking for a reclass for that position. On the MNO side, the main biggest increase, offset by some decreases. But overall, the software licenses, as I mentioned, as the departments go from first year, software residing in their department and moving it over to IT, that increases $180,000 for next year. Decrease, the department is decreasing their contract services for some router support that was not needed for next year. So they decreased that. And also on the professional technical side for IT support, they also decreased their budget by 70,000, being that they didn't need that additional budget for next year.
So Mr. George, does this budget reflect? You talked about some type of reorg over there with the manager leaving. Is that what we're looking at with these numbers?
Not necessarily. That as we delve into how we look at the department and possibly filling the director's position, we'll get more into the details and I'll come back to council with that should that take place. But this budget does not include that potential for a reorganization.
So these numbers are just, if we're doing the same thing we did last year, this is what the cost will be?
Yes, correct.
And if you want to change that, you're going to come to us and say, I've got a better weighted.
Yes, okay, correct.
Great.
All right. Any other questions? I'll move on to community development. The community development department's budget is $4 million next year. You see an increase of 6%. On their personnel side, you see, actually see a slight decrease. And that's really driven by the elimination of two part-time code enforcement officers or code compliance inspectors.
Is that, did we replace them with full-time? Is that why we're doing that or? Because just saying it took us years to get like my beloved weekend.
Well, it took a couple of years to budget them.
Yeah.
And then without, without, you know, without lack of trying, we haven't been able to recruit. We've gone through at least two or three recruitment cycles, posting, advertising, interviewing, and have not found part-time employees that are qualified to step in to provide the weekend coverage that we were looking for. In the meantime, we've had intermediate weekend coverage from our full-time staff for almost two years. And it resulted in less than 10% of the, the case, the cases coming from that coverage. So my recommendation is that we, we don't have additional budgeted positions and we triage in a more surgical manner. If there's something that comes up on weekends that we can tackle, then we can work with the staff, the existing staff to address it on, you know, as, as things come up. And until there's really need for a full-time staff member, it's not something I would recommend.
If, if you think we can accomplish it, you know, what we didn't want to do is have police doing code issues. But if you think we can do it with a, with your current alignment, I'm, I'm fine with it then.
And for the department's MNO budget, which is increasing by $237,000, main driver is their increase in their True North and Willdan plant check inspection and customer service contract amount that's going up. That does of course have a revenue offset, which is actually reflected in the current budget as well. And then the department is getting rid of their scanning services line item of 50,000. The department didn't need that for next year, so they're decreasing that line item. And just personal position wise, it's just a part-time position, not, not adding additional full-time as Michael mentioned. Moving on to police department. Police department's budget is proposed at $25.2 million next year. That's an increase of 13%. The main driver is on their personnel side, as I mentioned. It's seven positions. They're adding seven new officers and salaries and benefits. That's equates to $1.1 million increase to the budget. There's the UAL payment, that $2.9 million. Of that $2.9, $1.1 million is for police department. They are requesting to delete a personnel officer. That's a part-time position. That's a savings of $73,000. And also the department is increasing their overtime budget by $100,000. And that overtime increase is really just a salary adjustment as of course they have sold COLA increases for next year. But also the department and I met and their reimbursement overtime for some of the special events that they've been conducting, they wanted to account for those increases as well. So the department's asking for $100,000 in overtime. On the MNO budget, they're proposing $4.5 million. And that increase is actually on page on the second slide. On their admin division, which majority of their budget resides in, part of the, part of that 4% cut was the equipment replacement funding for some of their vehicles and equipment. Last year, they had cut that budget, but they are requesting to add that budget back in for next year so that they could continue funding their equipment for next year. The, there's an increase of $173,000. That's an increase due to the additional officers for ammunition, uniforms, gear and training. So that equates to $24,000 per officer that, for the seven officers that we're adding. The department is also asking to fund some of the repairs and maintenance utilizing the old DIF funds. That's $161,000. There's also an increase in insurance. That's of course out of their hands, but that's $94,000 increase in their budget next year. And then lastly, just various other contractual services increases of $37,000.
What are DIF funds?
That's, there's two types of DIF funds, developer impact fees.
Oh, oh, got it, got it, got it.
This is the old developer impact funds that doesn't have much restriction on. And then lastly, on the communication center division, they are moving that dispatch cost, which is $1.2 million. Used to always reside in PD. There, it should have always kind of been in FIRE and PD. So we're moving 50% of that cost to FIRE. So hence a decrease in the, in the PD's budget, but an increase in FIRE's budget. And that is police's budget for next year. Any questions from the council?
I have a question for the chief, which is we authorize going up to our all-time high staffing numbers of 72 before Prop 36 was in existence. We're in a, one could argue a different set of circumstances in terms of LA County District Attorney, level of prosecution. I remember meeting with Gascon, with you, Darrell, and Chief Bermudez. And things are markedly different, seems like. I think the stats, the crime stats would suggest also. Question is, do we really still need seven additional officers, knowing that it's going to be a $2.2 million hit plus a couple hundred thousand dollars for gear? I don't know if the insurance correlates to additional people, but we're looking at a 2.2. If that UAL, is that UAL, Paul, specifically for the new officers? No, okay. Of which, how much would be associated with the new officers? A hundred grand or something?
I think the new guys would be Pepperas.
Oh, yeah.
Right, generally.
Okay, good. So 1.1, but we're asking everyone else to be really shrewd in terms of the decisions they make as departments. So I guess the question goes back to, do we really still need seven additional officers?
I would say yes. And that's based on, we had a study done. And they were doing the, the whole study that the city wants to do citywide, which was done by post, police officers standardized training. They saw that we were looking to get to 72 and the recommendation does say to get to that number, we'll achieve the proper amount of personnel to work on our patrol division and also do our detective division. Right now, we're working at minimums. Even though again, when you look at our staffing levels, I can sit here and tell you, come Friday, I'll have 62 sworn officers. But of those 62, I have eight on training, four on medical, out on medical leave or injury of some sort, an additional one on military leave and one on admin leave, which means I'm only working with 48 right now as we sit here today. As I get the numbers up, you can anticipate, I know there's going to be questions about overtime. As I get those numbers up, get people off of training, then I can start realizing what that's going to look like when I get to 62, actual working bodies. It's going to take a while to get there because if somebody hires today, which you offered somebody a position today, I won't see them as a full-fledged officer on their own for 10 months to a year. Talking about training time, academy through the FTO program, and that's if they make it through. Unfortunately, as we talked about before, many people don't make it through or they have to cycle through again because of injuries or they're not making the training program. So it goes, it takes time to get there. So to answer your question long and the short, yes, 72 would be optimal for us to operate efficiently, to operate with the demands of the city, to do what we need to do, answer calls for service and do what's right for our community.
Does that 62 chief account for anyone we've got in the academy right now?
No, I've got five additionals in the academy.
Okay, so that would bring us to 67.
Correct.
Okay.
When was this post study done?
October, we started it. I didn't get it back till about two months ago roughly.
And this budget reflects 69?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, but that study was done after we had already made the decision to get to this number?
Yes, sir.
And that study says, and, and remind me what post stands for?
Police officers, the officers standardized training for the state of California. They're the ones who allow us to do police work throughout the whole state.
Okay. All right, chief, I got to be fair here. So when, when you quote post to me?
Yep.
If you could tell me when in their history they've ever said that you should have less, I'd give it more credibility. I, I don't want to fight with you on it. I'm just saying that I get your needs.
Sure.
But when you quote a government agency that quite literally will never, ever tell you that they need less, it, it hurts my, hurts the argument to me just.
Understood.
All right, thanks.
Got it.
I think Councilmember Boyle's idea of at least talking about freezing adding new ones, because right now I feel like a lot of our time is focused on training. You know, we've got a lot of young people who need to be trained. And so I, I just, my fear is by keep adding recruits out of the academy, that's more overtime, that's more training. The, the goal is good. I just, every person we hire is a financial commitment that spans well beyond when we're going to be sitting up here. So I, I, I think it's an important conversation we have if, if the recommendation that Chief Bermudez made back in the day, because at that time, we didn't know what the cost would be. We were, we were reacting to his situation and, and different circumstances.
His recommendation was to stay at 62.
I mean?
Yeah, we, 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 we told him he's getting 72.
Yeah.
So I surged him.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a conversation to be have about the continuing over-hire of police, given our current conditions. If we went to 72 before and that was somewhat arbitrary, and we have 67 now, right? Assuming these people make it through the academy and make it through training with 67, how do we feel about making the number 67? Like that's what we've got now, so we've got in the pipeline. And it gives us, given that they'll be coming through training, if a quarter for, in the next fiscal quarter, we see crime issues developing or things, we have the flexibility to maneuver on it. But that doesn't give us a huge amount of budgetary relief going from 69 to 67. But they are, individual officers are very expensive. Does that, is that workable, staying at 67? Because that's where we are now. That's where we are now with your, with, with your, with your recruits at the pipeline, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this, this is going to, so you have to make do with two less than the budgeted number for right now. But it shouldn't really affect your operation because you're going to have 67 coming through.
It, it'll significantly impact the direction we were going in. So because again, we were accounting for potentially getting to that 72 number, knowing now that we are going to lose potentially five additional officer positions, denying to go back to my staff and restructure certain things we were doing for the organization as a whole. That makes sense.
Well, even if you were looking at 72, you, you would, that would probably be a year out at, at least, right? That'd be pretty far in the future to get to that number.
I can get to that number quickly, meaning within six months. But having them full-fledged officers, that's what I'm saying, it'll take about a year to get there. There'll be a lot of training, a lot of things that are already discussed.
I just think to Councilmember Boyle's point, I don't know that the budget can tolerate 72. Certainly 69 is a, is a pretty significant stretch. I don't know, I would, and again, sorry, Councilmember.
Yeah, not to mention, we're also in contract negotiations right now as well. So that, that's part of it. But I would also say, I, I gotta be, I want to be careful about the narrative, right? Because what we authorized was at 62 is still the level, but we were given latitude to 72. So when you, you mentioned, hey, I'm going to lose five, I'm not losing anything.
Right.
We, we, we are over-hiring into what we had discussed. I just want to make sure that we have the proper narrative on what we're talking about, that's all. Because our, our goal has always been to strengthen and fund. I mean, you look at the budget, we, we, we fund police. We're, we're not trying to, to cut things there, but we're under some, as you can see from this presentation, some budgetary constraints that we have to keep in mind. So if it's a temporary situation, where we're trying to freeze something to look at what things look like down the road, you know, we're, we're still in a situation where we've, we're going to have 67 sworn officers. And I think we're at what, 55 about a year and a half ago, right? If I'm not mistaken. So that's all. I just, we're, we're on the same page, but there's something, times that we have to make decisions based on what we're facing.
Chief, can I ask another budgetary question that's not manpower based? Do you have in, I don't know where, which line item technology lives in? Because I know we've got drones on board, but there's other things we're looking at.
It's spread out throughout the budget, yes.
Does this account for, I know you were looking at Peregrine. I think Hermosa and Redondo signed up to it. I think it's like $50,000.
No, they'll be through the grant if we get the grant.
Okay, get a grant, okay.
I have a question. So if we're, if the consensus is to go from 72 to 67, can you talk about how that impacts your recruitment in general, right? Because if you're going to have some attrition, natural attrition from where you are currently, you know, do you?
It becomes difficult because people will know that we're at our maximum. So if you're putting in for the position, the likelihood of you getting hired here will decrease because you don't have any openings. So people wanting to put in for our openings will be far less.
And in what, how, what was the length of time it took to get from 62 to 67?
Well, again, at least a year because we're talking about recruiting, hiring, going through the whole process of backgrounds, then getting them. Again, the difference is we can have trainees, but then getting them as full sworn officers, it takes a while, at least seven, eight months roughly to get there.
What can we put in place so that if six months from now, chief comes back in and says, well, we were at 67, but now we're back at 62 or whatever. I need the, I need the room to be able to over-recruit to make sure we're holding steady.
So what I, I guess my, my response that would be, if you're having, I, I'm trying to figure out what that argument was. Is that, okay, well, I have trouble recruiting if I'm at my max. So if you hire up to 72 and you need some, are you saying that we can't recruit in? Whether the number is 72 or 67, you face the same problem.
It's harder to recruit.
At 72 or 67?
Beyond 67. So what I'm trying to say, if we say 67 is your cap, so if there's other officers who want to come work for our department, they're going to know there's no openings. So you're not going to get any more lateral opening positions, trying to put in for lateral positions. You're not going to get many inch lows because they're going to know, they're only going to wait should an opening come. So your recruits and your people wanting to apply for the position are going to go down because there are no openings. They're going to go to the department that has openings and has the ability to hire people today.
I, I, I got you, but I, you know, I think at one point, the problem was we had so many openings, we couldn't fill them. And now we're saying the opposite. So at, at some point in time, we, we have to stop jumping on your side of the fence here.
Sure, sure.
So I, I think what we're saying is if we're deciding right now, say, we, we authorized up to 10, we're at 67, let's put a little hold on that. But if you have an opportunity, you get somebody that's unbelievable, that wants to come in here and you have a need, that's one council meeting away from asking for, for latitude on that. Am I, am I wrong? I mean, it's, it's happened before.
This is coming up right now. I can tell you right now, we're entertaining a very highly qualified, very good lateral today that is finishing the background process, that'll get us to 68. I hate to tell them, sorry, but no. Where we've invested the time into this individual to come over to work for us when we were anticipating the opening to be at 72.
Okay, that's a legitimate concern.
And that's where we face where that individual can now say, well, if you guys can't hire me, I'm going to go down the street to XYZ department. And we're losing a very good candidate.
All right, so let's look at this because this budget is until August. So your, your decision on this individual is going to come up soon, I assume, right? We're, we're at the beginning of May.
It'll, it can be in the next week.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, is that Okay, so what I'm saying is, is that, all right, then, if you have something in the pipeline, that gets you to sixty-eight, it's an arbitrary number, one way or another, fine. But I think we have to just sit there and realize that at this situation with what we're facing right now, w- w- we, we have to be able to say no at certain point in time. But in a situation like this, that's, that's an outlier, let's, you don't wanna lose someone like that, I got you.
Yeah.
I, I think we're open to, to being reasonable on things like that.
Is the official budgetary number right now still sixty-two with an over-hire? Or did we change the magic number to seventy? Do we, does that require any sort of formal process to say what our D O N E of the department is?
No, I, I don't think so.
My recollection was it was sixty-two, and we gave authorization to over-hire to ten, but we specifically said the number didn't change from sixty-two.
I think that's right.
Our, our adopted budget is at sixty-two sworn officers. The proposed budget right now includes seven more to get you to sixty-nine.
Right, that's, that's what I was gonna clarify, so this seven will get you to sixty-nine. So, if we're, you're talking about there's a total of sixty-seven, this seven would go to five additional.
So, it's important to note that that does not mean we're saving two-point-three million dollars by moving that from sixty-nine to sixty-seven.
No, we'd probably save like five hundred thousand.
Next year, but over ten years, absolutely. This is our most expensive asset, our most valuable asset is our people.
But this budget is this budget based on sixty-nine, not.
Correct.
Sixty-seven or seventy-two.
Right, correct, yes.
That makes more sense now. How does, how does making it sixty-seven with an authorized over-hire to sixty-eight, because we've got somebody in the pipeline? And then there'll probably be some natural attrition, somebody's gonna leave or move or something.
Yeah, that's, that's entirely possible. We're always chasing that number, for us to even get to that sixty-two, takes a while. And like I mentioned, even the trainees, we don't know if all the trainees, all the recruits that are actually in the FTO program, are they gonna all make it? So, it's, it's challenging to tell you, come six months from now, I'm a hundred percent be at, I'll be at sixty-eight. I don't know, because again, not everybody makes the training program, uh, people don't make the academy, they recycle, or they sometimes say, this is not for me, or we tell them too as well, this is not for you, and we have to move on.
All right, so if I'm reading the tea leaves, this budget, really just I'm up for this exact budget. So, sixty-two is still the number, we're authorizing on this budget up to sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's it for right now. You're not, not over sixty-nine, you're fixing.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I would say, though, make it sixty-seven and have room for the person who's in the pipeline, he can go to sixty-eight.
No, he's already, if we're saying to go to sixty-nine, and we're already there.
Yeah.
No, we're budgeted for sixty-nine, but he's got sixty-seven if you count the guys in training, and then one person he wants to bring over. Right, sixty-eight, that's sixty-eight. So, I'm saying like, but let's make the number sixty-seven with an over-hire on this, and that way, some of these six guys, six guys in the academy, two of them aren't gonna make it, right? One of them may not make it, right? And that brings us down to a number that is manageable.
I'm hopeful all make it.
Okay, I see what you're just, I see what you're just, I get it, I get it, we're all, we're all magical flowers.
I want everybody to make it.
Not, not all Marines are pulley machines, I, I mean, it's not, some of them are not gonna make the hump, so.
Of course.
So, to be redundantly clear, we're gonna hold the over-hires at a total of sixty-eight? Or is it sixty-nine?
I, I would, I would say sixty-seven with this, like a special dispensation for this one individual he's talking to.
All right.
How does that work administratively?
It's, the number's sixty-seven, and if, and if this person says yes tomorrow, the number becomes sixty-eight. If this person says no tomorrow, then the number is sixty-seven, and we proceed with, with who we've got in the pipeline now.
We are pretty confident he's gonna say yes.
Great. Perfectly clear?
I mean, as mud. Yeah, Paul will tell us how much we saved by what those numbers now look like from one officer.
Actually, that's true, we'll know what happens by the time this budget comes back to be passed.
Right.
Okay.
Any more questions? Sir?
Not a question, a comment, we just talked about this recently, is that one of the beautiful things that we have available to us in the City of El Segundo is lifetime medical, which other agencies don't offer. In fact, Inglewood got rid of it, how long ago, Mayor?
Uh, when Mayor Butts, his first cycle through.
Maybe ten years ago or something. Um, and so I think when we're talking about our truly burdened expense for officers, and any personnel in the city, we should be figuring out a way to capture that, because it's really, we're understating it, but this is something that we bear every year over and over again. Um, so I think that's something that's important, as well as we know with police and fire, that if there is a, an injury, or if there's chronic condition, it is presumed to be a worker's comp-related injury, unlike the other departments of the city. I think also that should be something that we should try and calculate to fully understand the burden. Uh, and it's one that we know the taxpayers want us to continue to bear, is public safety, our own is paramount, but we should be looking at accurate numbers when it comes to lifetime.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, my, my, um, history in law enforcement is long, as far as the amount of I O Ds that we carry here, it's not high. Uh, I've only got two short-term and two long-term, uh, hoping to get the two that are short-term back when, within the next couple of months. The other two long-term, I'm not certain on them, but that's not too many when you look at a very physical job, and it's very demanding, which is why people end up having these injuries, so it's not too high.
Yeah, no, I'm not disputing that the injuries happen, but police and fire, I totally get, I'm just asking that we capture it, that's all.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a break? Paul, we're gonna take a, a, a two-minute biological recess.
Before we do that.
I don't think we have an opportunity.
Oh, bio, bio, I didn't hear the biological, sorry, yes, 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 yes.
Before we do.
You know what, he had too many beverages.
I've got five more slides to cover.
We are now at four oh one, we are back.
The floor is yours.
All right, well, council, before we went on our break, I just wanted to make sure I get that final clarity on the police officers. The current budget includes sixty-nine budgeted sworn officers. But what I'm hearing is that we want to budget for sixty-seven. But i- if the department was to hire and get to sixty-eight, then we can come back to council and let you know and grant the department to go ahead and hire up to sixty-eight.
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, and what I'll do is when I come back on June third for the budget adoption, I'll make sure I reflect those changes and the budgetary savings or decrease in the budget as well. Next department is fire. Fire department's overall total expenditure is eighteen point two million dollars next year. Yes, we did, yes. We covered the MNO budget with PD unless council has any other questions. All right, fire department, the fire department's budget is going up by two point six million or sixteen percent. And there's various components here. On the personnel side, it's going up by twelve percent or one point six million dollars. And the main driver is that UAL payment of two point nine million, which a million of it is with fire. But then they are also unfreezing a fire marshal position that was frozen in our last year's budget of one hundred and eighty-three thousand. That was added back in. But also the department is requesting a increase in overtime of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's mainly due to, one, adjusting for salaries and reflecting the COLA increases going into next year. But also the department breaks out overtime and the category for unplanned overtime, which consists of IODs, injury on duty, or other unplanned events when they try to plan out their schedule. That's when the overtime for unplanned is utilized in the department. So they're asking to kind of update their overtime budget for that particular line item. So total overtime increase is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Someone got to walk me through why we've got overtime, overtime professional development coverage, overtime unplanned, overtime FLSA expenditures, overtime safety staffing coverage, overtime reimbursables. Because you break them out, but combined, it's quite sizable. So are there reasons for the different names or why are we accounting it this way as to just saying we've got, I don't have to add this up yet, but over a million.
And I'll ask Chief Avery to assist with that answer. But what we did last year was the first year, we actually broke out overtime. It used to be just two categories of overtime, or three, I believe it was three overtime categories. But the chief felt that kind of breaking it out into these five or so six categories made more sense to be more transparent to as well. So I'll turn it over to Chief to kind of answer additional kind of questions regards to overtime.
Yes, thank you. As we all know, I've been here just over a year and we've had to do a lot of exploratory surgery, if you will, on the budget, including overtime. Because even for myself coming in, it was very unexplainable. So when we did that, we took a look at exactly what were the drivers for each category. And we were able to find out that the safety staffing coverage is what we can predict every single day. Every employee takes vacation sick, but those are predictable. Then we have reimbursable, like the fires at Palisades that we essentially sent two fire engines out for two weeks. And we were able to recoup those costs within just a couple of months from our admin staff. That was three hundred and sixty thousand, close to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we got back very quickly. Then we also, so in terms of the overtime itself, now we go to the unplanned. So when I looked at, we as staff and the battalion chiefs looked at what is driving this? And it was the vacancies that we had when I got here, had five vacancies. We had three, we had three employees on injury, we had a captain's vacancy. So at this point in time, we only have one vacancy left now. But what's reflected in that ask is that we still have five people on that are rookie status that can go anywhere. They may not make probation. And we just want to make sure we cushion what could happen in the future and come back to you and say, well, we actually didn't spend that much. Rather than come to the podium and say, well, we need more. I never want that to happen. With that being said, with the vacant, with the vacancies that we've had and with the overtime that we've expended, we have not, I'm not coming to you to ask for a budget adjustment. We've been able to realize salary savings and some other cost adjustments to cover those costs. So I hope that answers your questions about unplanned.
Well, the unplanned is the jump from five thousand four hundred and fifty to three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, and as Paul had mentioned, part of that was because the overtime was not adjusted with the salary increases they had in their previous contract, it remained the same rate. And then we're also predicting, well, we still have, I still have three employees on injury right now. And I know that one of them is going to be resolved. We worked with city manager and HR to find out what our options are with people that are in injury. And as all of you know, it's very difficult. So we've explored every avenue in terms of how can we reduce this cost? But some of it, we just have to bear because it's, as Councilman Boyle said, it's assumed. So we just want to make sure that we, we prepare for what's going to happen in next fiscal and be obviously conservative about it, but realistic.
Okay, Chief, so again, I'm being fair here today. So again, when we talked about this, I see Ryan in the back there. One of the things I'd said is, okay, the overtime numbers, all that was based on, hey, one of the biggest problems is we're not fully staffed, right? So I understand now that there's a, there's a ramp up to when you get those five positions there. However, that overtime number, I think our expectation was that it was going to go down at some point, not cushion to go up. Now, I understand this ramp up of the five, I get it. But at some point, you know, we have to walk what we talk, right? So I would understand if the increase was in, you know, and there is increase in salaries and benefits and everything like that that has to do with the contract and all that, I get that. But it's these overtime things that are constantly kind of hounding us a little bit. And at some point in time, we have to get to that level where you're fully staffed and that number is predicted to be down.
Absolutely, and I agree. Because as we are fully staffed, we're one short of being fully staffed right now. Overtime will go down, but what's driving it is injuries right now. We've had bereavement, we have FMLA and, you know, things like that.
I just want to make sure that your strategic plan still gets you to the point where hopefully you're coming in here at next budget cycle and saying, hey, we're down.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We resolved the, the issue where if we have someone who's at a senior level, take captain is filling in for a firefighter on a truck, he's getting overtime at the firefighter rate, not at the captain rate, correct?
We no longer have that. So the captain is not working as a firefighter.
And our vacancy is because we promoted, not because we had a departure.
That's correct.
I mean, I think that we have, whether we wanted to or not, all become intimately aware with the staffing intricacies of the fire department and the predictable overtime pieces. I think that even though this is, if I'm going to put words in your mouth, a bit of a placeholder on the unplanned overtime, it is a shocking number. I mean, it's three quarters of a million dollars of unplanned overtime. If you spend that, if we put in here and we come in in a year and we see the actual is three quarters of a million dollars of unplanned overtime, I think there's going to be some really unhappy faces.
Absolutely, I understand.
Mayor, one of the questions occurred to me is you mentioned the reimbursable overtime fire response. Historically, how much has that been as a percent of overtime or absolute dollars?
Well, historically, we have not sent out any fire engines because we've been so woefully understaffed. So we've frozen our ability to go out as a master mutual aid partner throughout the state. And this was only recently, as you know, that we went to Palisades Fire and were able to help those in need. And that was in three, almost four years.
Okay, because I remember with Chief Donovan, I think we were helping out with mutual aid. With the overtime, just curious, how are the numbers built? Were they just based on historicals then for the overtime? So the historical includes that three hundred thousand and change for Eaton and Palisades, right?
Yeah, we only went to Palisades, but the other good news is that your fire paramedics transporting were able to recover almost a million dollars back in revenue.
I guess that's where I'm going is if we're going to have this increase in overtime, some of which is reimbursable, can we not also have an offsetting credit line that we expect revenue coming in to offset the OT?
And that's our transport, correct.
Is that in the budget? Okay, how much are you expecting? Yeah, just for reimbursements on overtime.
Nine hundred thousand plus the three hundred and fifty thousand and then plus the fifty-six thousand from the charters coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, before I let you go, why, we, we rate two fire marshals, correct?
I'm sorry.
We have two fire marshals on our TNO, TNO E?
Right now, I'm your fire marshal and the fire marshal is frozen, that position.
The other, the second one is, okay.
Well, actually, that's our only one. And actually, we underfilled that to deputy fire marshal because we could not attract any fire marshals when we originally flown the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving to the departments, O and M.
Do we know, by the way, the, so the communications and the radio, that's, that's reflecting the move over for the, for dispatch?
Yes.
What is the line item for professional and technical that went up by three hundred thousand?
Let me get to that really quick.
It's sixty-two fifteen or sixty-two fourteen? Sixty-two fourteen, professional and technical goes to, from four twenty-five to seven twenty-five.
That's the will then plan check, or fire plan check increase. And that's, that's a revenue offset.
That's a revenue line, got it, thank you.
And so just to kind of go through the fire department's various divisions regards to their MNO increases. Insurance, those costs are out of, it is what it is regards to the increase in insurance going into next year. The suppression division, there's a hundred and ninety thousand, that was the equipment replacement fund that was held during the four percent cut last year, they're asking for that back in. And then that large dispatch for a fire department, the portion that was sitting in fire, I mean, police, has been moved into fire. On the paramedic division side, another equipment replacement funding that the department is asking for to continue funding for their various vehicle and equipment for the future. Their transport billing, that's where they increased that by forty-five thousand dollars and that's a revenue offset. We'll collect that and it's reflected in the revenue as well. The department is also asking for ten thousand for a hydraulic gurney. And then lastly, the prevention division, they're asking for an increase for their plan check contract services. And that also is a revenue offset as one and is reflected in our revenue budget. No other questions? Move on to public works. The public works department's overall budget is a little shy of ten million dollars. It's an increase of one percent, so pretty flat. And so we'll just cover on the personnel side, you do see a decrease of five percent. And that's really just driven by, similar to kind of the HR where they had various vacancies. So we budget them at a step C. They also have new hires that are starting at a lower level. So we do see a decrease in their personnel budget. On their various MNO line items, there's actually a page two, I believe, yes. So the department has various divisions, but government buildings division, they're asking for an increase of eighty thousand for plunge operations. That's for six months' worth. They're also decreasing their gas, aquatics gas utility by a hundred thousand. And this was just an analysis, a discussion between Elias and I regards to what they've historically spent. And it looked like they were ranging lower than what they projected in the budget. So we went ahead and adjusted that. But if we look at the three pools that are going to be operational next year, you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand or fifty thousand per pool for gas utility for the aquatic pool. On the engineering division, there's some various items, the contract services, they're asking for a facility assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Civil design of seventy-five thousand. And then a decrease on their public works inspection of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's a contract services line item that they're decreasing. For their street division, they are asking for an increase of two hundred and ninety thousand. And that's really due to their annual street sweeping contract, that's paying prevailing wage now.
Is there litigation going on on that because they used as a prevailing wage factor, the synthetic road cleaning service? Wasn't there somebody contesting that? Is that a Yuba or Eureka or somewhere?
To my knowledge, there is, there is no litigation. But in order for us to be on a safe side, as, as you recall, the city council decided that we would extend the contract with prevailing, prevailing wages. And the legislature has not made the decision yet, but we wanted to be on a safe side. I'm not aware of any litigation at this point.
Okay, yeah, and I remember the street sweeping company said, yeah, it's just a passerby. I thought they were looking to get that reclassified somehow from the state. So it would be less than ninety-six dollars an hour, was it ninety-six, twenty-five an hour with the street sweeper?
Right.
Yeah, I think the agreement was they agreed if it changed from prevailing wage, then our rate would drop accordingly. So they're just, they have to pay it, so we have to pay them. And if it changes, hopefully it will, then we'll see a decrease on that.
We will reset, yeah.
Paul, can we go back to the hundred and fifty thousand on the facility assessment? Can you walk through, so that's an assessment of all government buildings?
Yes, ma'am, it would be the assessment of all the government buildings and have a good understanding of what the needs are, what the upgrades or the shortfalls are, the shortcomings. And the old one that, that we have is about, it was done in two thousand and nineteen, so that's about six years old. And, and it's really not frankly that, that accurate. So this is going to tell us exactly what our needs going to be.
My question on this is always, we spend money to do an assessment. This is not related necessarily to public works, but in general. Like we did a plunge assessment and we spend money on that and then nothing happens for five years. And so then we have to spend money on another assessment that just says it costs more. So if we do this assessment, then what? So I, I don't want to budget for an item that we don't have any plan for after that.
I was hoping he would promise to never read the assessment.
So once, once this assessment is done, we are going to revise our five-year CIP forecast based on the actual needs. Right now, we do have that as an exhibit, the CIP spreadsheet for five years. So based on the new, once we do receive the new, the assessment, the new one, we will be able to make whatever correction needs to be made.
And what's the timeline on getting that assessment back?
So we plan to have the RFP out next month or two. And by the time we contract it out, it'll be perhaps surely after summer. It's going to take a few months to get, get all the work done. So in, in practicality, it'll be toward the end of the year, maybe early next year before we know the results. So that's.
In theory, for our mid-year budget next year, we will have a five-year CIP that includes that assessment.
Correct.
In theory.
And typically, I don't come back during mid-year with a five-year forecast update or CIP five-year forecast. But because of the timing of the assessment, I can come back in January of next year and give you an update as well. If the assessment is done and if there's potential changes to the five-year forecast, we can bring back to the council so that you can kind of see what that impact looks like for the next five years.
I mean, kind of jumping on that same topic, I, we, we spend so much money on these things and not just in your department, but everywhere. And I, Councilmember Keldor, you haven't been up here very long, but you figured that piece out real quick, is that what's the accountability on all this? This is a tremendous amount of money we're paying the third parties to be, to not actually be responsible for whatever they suggest to us. You know, being, being a third-party consultant is the greatest job in the world because you don't actually have, nobody can blame you for anything, right? So in the end, I think going forward, Darryl, on all of this, there has to be an immediate, what do we learn from this? What, what action are we taking on it and was it worth it? Because to continue pouring money into these things simply because we've been doing it forever in a day is not justification.
No, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I mean, for the facility assessment, I know when Elias and I sit down and Paul and we project out five years on CIP, I mean, it's really, I mean, you know, God bless Elias, he makes some really guestimates on all these numbers. And I said, well, how do we know, you know, and we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think this facility assessment narrows the scope and the cost to a point where we can be way more accurate when we come back, say at mid-year and say this, you know, to redo the Jocelyn Center, this is what it's potentially going to cost versus kind of these guesses that we've been making now.
And I know that this is a tremendous idealistic ask, but it would be nice if after the assessment is done, then we collectively have revisit this plan and talk about what we're deciding to do and what we're not. And if we're collectively making the decision not to do it, then I would like to not, again, in five years, do another assessment that just says we need to do the same things from.
Understand, yeah.
Let me just kind of go through the remaining divisions. The street maintenance division, they're actually decreasing their budget by fifty-five thousand due to need for less material on their side. The solid waste recycling division, you do see an increase of seventy-five thousand dollars for the franchise hauling agreement that recently was agreed, was in place. And that contract now is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And lastly, the storm drains division, they're decreasing their gas utility by ten thousand due to just overall usage and analysis of what they've been paying. And then also a decrease of repairs and maintenance budget by twenty thousand.
Can you roll the slide forward?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry about that. Any, sorry about that, but any last questions of public works department? Last department to cover is. Last department to cover is RPL. So, their total budget is eleven point two million dollars. It's an increase of five percent, and I know there's going to be some discussion regards to plunge and personnel, but their personnel budget is seven point six million dollars. It's an increase of two percent. That's really driven by the six months of plunge operations, and I know Ellie has additional information that she can provide if you are looking for hours, because what I was told when I was packaging this budget together, of course, the information comes from the department because they know the operations, what they need, what the needs are for next year, and the budgetary number is at, especially with part-time, it's not driven by the amount of headcount, it's actually driven by how many hours. And so, the information we got from the department was, these are the amount of hours we need so that when plunge comes online in January, this is how many lifeguards we need. And then, also, the aquatic center is going to be shut down for two months, so then they adjusted that down, and of course, increased plunge operations by six months' worth of operations. And so, that's the input I got from the department. If, I know the council members had specific questions on the budget for personnel on the plunge operations, but Ellie is here to help clarify any additional questions on that. Regards to positions, library is asking for a reclassification of a library assistant to a librarian one. That cost is twenty-eight thousand dollars, and really, the department's need was that the librarian one will be doing more staff scheduling, supervising, development of policies, initiating contracts, and preparing budget. So, that was kind of the ask from the library side on positions. Kind of going back into kind of recreation and the part-time hours for the pool programming, there is six months of pool plunge operations, that's seven point three-one FTEs. Two months of closure of aquatics is a decrease of four point eight-six FTEs, and then they're extending hours at Hilltop, and that's just an increase of point five-four FTEs. On their MNO, maintenance operations side for the department, it's broken up into really three divisions, recreation, the plunge operations, I mentioned, they're adding three months of activity, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars. Twenty-four thousand is for operating supplies, ten thousand for emergency repairs, and then four thousand for training and education. The department is also asking for some operating supplies for their clubhouse and tiny tots program, that's ten thousand dollar increase. Also, the department's asking for an increase in budget for the Jocelyn Center programming for senior events, four thousand, senior programming for two thousand, and then raise planter beds in the garden for ten thousand dollars. The department is also asking for an increase in special events, and of course, that's due to the expanded scope. The Fourth of July, they're asking for an increase of nineteen thousand dollars for their Fourth of July event, and then concerts at the park. From the last meeting, the council had directed staff to move the cost for concerts in the park from the general fund to the cultural arts fund, so we moved that out. So, you see a decrease of fifteen thousand, but of course, that resides now with the cultural arts fund. And then the decrease at Wiseburn for the aquatic center's closure during the summer months, and that decreases ten thousand dollars.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Again, we've got to talk about positions here because the math, maybe I'm just not understanding, okay? On one hand, we're saying that we need to hire thirty or forty more lifeguards because the plunge is opening, and then we're saying that we don't really have a, you know, a positive headcount increase. I don't, how does that work? Like, what am I missing? I'm missing some kind of math here.
I'm going to let Joe get up and explain, because you're talking specifically about the plunge and the additional staffing.
Well, it's not really, it's plunge, it's the entire department, right? So, it doesn't matter whether they work at the plunge or work at the aquatic center, and I know part of what you're going to say is, well, when the pool is closed for two months, but the plunge isn't going to be open by then.
Right.
Which brings up my second problem that you can maybe answer at the same time. You're going to lose all those lifeguards if we don't figure out a way to keep them during those summer, when the summer months, when those two, when the pools close down.
They're actually, they're going to move over and they're going to work in recreation.
Okay.
So, we've offered them that, correct? Yes.
All right, because that's probably, it took us a long time to get them, and now we could lose them because of that, so, all right.
No, we thought about that. I think the tricky thing with the headcount is, as Paul tried to explain this, and I think I'll try and explain it as well, but it's not, I could have ten, ten, you know, part-time employees, and it looks like I've got ten part-time employees that for an FTE is twenty hours a week, but they could work two hours a week. So, our FTE number is a little bit harder to, you know, it's not as black and white as some of the others, because those bodies work from two hours a week to thirty hours a week. So, basically, the way we set the budget is on how many hours we need staffing there. And Joe's confident that he's got the staffing needs, so there may be forty to fifty lifeguards, but those forty to fifty people aren't working twenty hours a week.
Yeah, they equate to, say, four, or like, one full-time, like, four of them equal one full-time position or something like that. So, that's why the numbers look the way they do.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
So, it's a little confusing, but, so, yeah, it's always with recreation, it's a little tricky, because we have to have a lot of bodies...
Yeah.
...to do forty hours' worth of work.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask about the ten thousand dollars to raise garden beds?
Yes.
Are we talking about that area by the batting cages?
Yes, so the community garden that we have in Recreation Park, we actually had this in as an ask last year, but we took it out with the four percent reduction, but essentially, our garden plots sit on the ground, and they're very difficult for seniors and those with, you know, special abilities to access. So, for a couple of years now, we've been really wanting to redo that area there, redo all of the plots, raise them up off of the ground, and do some other, you know, cosmetic work, if you will, out there.
Is it getting utilized now?
One hundred percent of the time.
Okay.
They are completely full all of the time.
While you're standing there...
Yes.
What is our new and improved July four scope?
It's new and improved costs, so basically, the costs of the services have skyrocketed. We are not actually, we are not, yeah, no pun intended, we are not actually increasing the scope of the event. We are, yeah, we are just, we are seeing, especially, we are, the people that do the fireworks show know that they're like a real commodity, so we're seeing those costs go up.
We had a lovely woman come in and talk to us about the drones.
About the drones.
Is that a cost savings? Does it cost more to have a drone light show?
You know, we haven't really looked into it in much detail. I think staff is sort of of the mindset that that would go over not well. However, if it was something the council wanted us to look at for next year, it's something, we could, we could at least get the number and see if it's worth it. We are going to be proposing some changes to the program for next year. What we're seeing is, this is a full-day event for staff, and not that staff mind working, but the cost that we're paying, talking about police overtime, that is a significant chunk of money we're spending on Fourth of July. This event costs over a hundred thousand dollars for us to do, so we want to take a look at creatively programming, so maybe we don't go five hours in the morning, close for two hours, another five hours at night. Maybe we condense it all into one afternoon activity, so we're going to get creative, and we can also certainly at least take a look at the drones and see what that would look like.
Do you have data that tells us how many people attending the Fourth of July are residents versus non-residents? Do they buy a different wristband?
Do we do resident versus non-resident? No, we don't, because...
It's just open.
Right. During the day, it's open, in the evening, we require a wristband, so I guess that's really, though, based on, do you have a rec ID or do you not have a rec ID, you can still be a resident, and we give some of those away, but maybe there's a way we can look at capturing some of that information, but from staff's perspective, we just met about Fourth of July this week, they think that the earlier part of the day is more attended by residents, and that then those folks disperse, they go to their homes, they watch the fireworks from their yards, and that we're getting a significant number of non-residents at the evening event.
Interesting to see that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't spend a great deal of time on the drones until you talk with the police chief and the restrictions that LAX has on our airspace.
Yes, yes.
It's, makes sense at like a, you know, baseball stadium, where you've got large parking lots, but we, we don't have that luxury.
Sure, yeah, we can consider all those things.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing else from you?
I'm letting you off the hook. You did a good job, thank you.
All right. No other questions, thank you.
Let me just finish up the department's MNO budget here, because they have parks operations as well. The parks operations, they are increasing their budget by a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for the landscape budget. Now, their total landscape budget is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Where are we at in terms of life cycle of that contract? I feel like that came up a few years ago.
I was sitting in the executive conference room reviewing proposals. So, we just finished an RFP, and we have, I think, six vendors that submitted proposals, so we'll be reviewing that. That contract actually expires at the end of this month.
So, are we anticipating, do we already know the number and the price?
We don't know the numbers yet, that's what we're anticipating.
Okay.
And for the parks operations, they're asking to add back that four percent for the equipment replacement fund for, from last year's four percent cut for their various equipment that they want to fund for next year as well.
I think it's worth noting that there's been a fundamental discussion of the value of the equipment replacement funds on a go-forward basis within the finance committee, more to come on that.
And then, lastly, the library division, their overall budget is decreasing, and the decrease is from the online cataloging, that software component is now sitting with IT, that's twenty-two thousand dollars, and then they have one-time library furnishing that they had this year, they're not adding, they're taking that out for next year. And then, lastly, books and printed materials and ebooks, they're asking for a three thousand dollar budget increase next year. That concludes RPL's budget, and we're on to our last phase, or last part of our presentation. It's our five-year proposed CIP budget. That is also, there's an exhibit in part of your staff packet that you can see the five-year forecast, but I will turn it over to Elias, because he knows the specifics of where we are regards to the CIP budget.
You're going to change this slide for me? No, no. You're good. Yeah. Yeah. Good afternoon. So, going on slide number forty-seven, so these are the list of the projects that either have been completed or have been completed and accepted by the city council. The Center Street Storm Drain Improvement Project, a hundred seventy-four thousand, it is already completed and accepted by the city council. The next one, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Pavement Rehab Project, two point two million dollars, was recently completed. We plan to go to city council for notice of completion on May the twentieth. The Water Main Improvement Project is already completed, one point seven, and accepted. The annual concrete project, this is basically the sidewalks for a hundred seventy thousand, is, it's been completed and accepted. The ADA Ramp Project, about two hundred, well, about two hundred thirty-nine thousand, this was already completed and accepted. The next, the next project, the next project is City Hall HVAC, which was recently done a few weeks ago for seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This project is completed, and we plan to go to city council for notice of completion soon, and the last one, the Monument Sign Project, was completed, four hundred eighteen thousand. We plan to go to city council for notice of completion on May the sixth. The CIP projects that are in progress, everybody's favorite, Teen Center, is the project which is under design right now. We expect that the hundred percent construction documents to be completed by August of this month, and shortly after, we plan to take this project to city council for adoption of the plans and request authorization to advertise the project. The next one is, is the Reckon Park Project Phase Two. The Phase Two of the Reckon Park Project, it includes basically the repairs of the fence posts, the walls, the court, the cracks on the courts, and we happen to name this project as Phase Two, just so, if you recall, you know, that would be the way to cosmetically repair these fence posts that you can see, so this is, this is how I call it, Phase Two, which we use the same terminology in the five-year CIP spreadsheet. Phase Two is defined to deal with those broken fence posts and walls and repairs that were needed. So, the design is underway, we plan to have the design completed by summer, and shortly after, we'll take this project to city council for adoption of the plans and asking authorization to advertise the project. The next project, which is everybody's favorite again, one of the most favorite ones, is the, is the plunge. So, the plunge project is going fairly well. Right now, the construction is still anticipated to be completed by December, by the end of this year. They are working on Locker's Room, the frame has been done, they're working on dry walls, and the painting is in progress. They are also working on the fire alarm, the fire suppression system, electric connections, plumbing, HVAC. Roof is currently being worked on, they are also working on the bleachers, the pool plumbing is already ongoing. By the way, the skimmers and return line, return lines, water lines, that this part of the plumbing is already installed, and the pool tiles and the finish is in a progress, and as you guys know, one of the challenges is to replace the tiles for the plunge, which is nearly going to cost about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Elias, can I suggest to, can we, can we hew to the budgeting aspect of these things? We can do project update stuff, but I think for time sensitivity here, let's go to the numbers.
Sure. So, the projects for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and before I go into that slide, I would like to acknowledge Eric is here, who is the chair of the CPAC, and I want to thank you for being here. Eric and his committee helped us tremendously to look at every CIP project and evaluate each project, and thank you for your time. So, the fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six CIP projects, fourteen point four million, and the breakdown, two point one is proposed transportation funds, five point eight million are proposed from the enterprise fund appropriations, about half million proposed from the special revenue, and eight hundred thousand stormwater fund appropriations, and five point two million is the general fund appropriations. So, these are the dollars for the, for the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund CIP.
Are we allowed to use Measure A allocations for the dog park?
For the...
You are able to use them, but we don't have them programmed for that.
No.
Yes.
We have them programmed for that.
Okay.
Are those going to the Rec Park Playground? Is that, are we easy, ah, I got it, understood.
Right. So, two hundred fifty thousand is for HVAC, citywide, half million for Dog Park, hillside destabilization, a hundred thousand citywide miscellaneous repair, a hundred thousand for plumbing, a hundred thirty thousand for electrical, fifty thousand miscellaneous, two hundred fifty thousand is for main facilities, ADA compliance projects, one million plunge rehab, we are requesting one million... one million plunge rehab, we are requesting one million in order to be able to, hopefully be able to accommodate all the change orders, and, uh, and probably, we are not going to be expecting any, any more change orders on the horizon. So with, hopefully with this one million, we'll be able to, to hopefully be able to finish that project. Uh, one million dollar for Reckon Park Project for Phase One. Now Phase One includes the Teen Center and the two ball fields, basically. So the anticipated estimate for the Teen Center and the ball fields is about nine million dollars. Currently, we have now eight million dollars, so that's why we are asking for one more additional, one more million dollar.
It'd be nice, I mean, if we don't get those drawings and the Teen Center back until August, right? I'm assuming that'll come with some estimate from our architects of what the cost will be.
Yes, sir.
The only thing they produce so far is just like a cost per square foot, so it's not very accurate, and we won't know until it hits the street and we get the bids back, what those actual costs will be.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, any chance we're going to get those plans before August? A hundred percent? Because I've been told they're at a hundred percent.
The hundred percent design development is already submitted to the city, and, uh, they have better numbers than, than just per square yard or a square foot.
Mm-hmm.
So the estimate that, uh, as of two weeks ago, that I was provided with, which is based on hundred percent design development, for the Teen Center, that is Teen Center itself plus Teen Center Plaza, that means the baseball plus the skate park, it's four-point-seven million dollars.
Does that include the new LED lighting that was discussed? Is that all in?
Uh, it does include the lighting. The lighting is not a very big portion of that, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah, four-point-seven million is the estimate. Now, we have not started, uh, the detailed drawing on the ball fields, because the ball fields, as you recall, we decided to put our concentration on the Teen Center. The ball field's estimate is about four, four-point-three million. So four-point-three plus four-point-seven is nine million. So we have, the, currently, we have eight million funding, and that's where, what this one million is coming from, is, is the delta, the difference.
Okay.
We, we haven't seen the Teen Center finals, have we? We saw conceptual stuff?
No, we, we've seen the conceptual stuff, in the subcommittee, um, there wasn't full plans to give to us, so we canceled last meeting. We're waiting to see these plans at the subcommittee level as well, and then they'll come here before they go out, um, to forbid.
Right, so the intentions are for the next, the sub, uh, the next committee meeting, they're going to bring the design drawings, particularly with respect to the basketball court and, uh, and the skate park, and they're going to go over every item. I know there were some questions about, uh, the tops of concrete, whether we're going to paint.
Right, we're going to paint it, are you going to stain the concrete?
Correct. So they're going to make a presentation, and it, I've already seen it, it looks, it looks, the design looks good.
Okay.
The Recreation Park Project Phase Two, as I indicated, it includes the, uh, repair of all the fence posts in about a hundred locations. It's, this project not to be taken lightly, a lot of walls that are cracked and fix, it needs fixing, and some cracks needed to be routed and, and sealed, so we're looking at, uh, one-point-two million. This is the budget, I expect it's not, not to be more than a million, but for budget purposes, we, we are having one-point-two million for this Phase Two project for the rec park. The, uh, down, the downtown beautification, that two-hundred thousand is, is the carryover, um, and, uh, the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand is the finance office remodeling. This project is going to allow Paul to be able to utilize his space a little more efficiently, and it has the, the backing of the, of the CPAC, by the way. And the last, but not the least, is three-hundred thousand, police department elevator, this is, uh, this is a maintenance preventive measure. This elevator is very old, and it constantly breaks down, we want to be able to, uh, before we really lose it, be able to do whatever repairs are needed, so, so, you know, have this elevator sustained for additional ten, fifteen, maybe twenty years. Yes, sir.
Would you please remind me what the downtown beautification is? Is that lights? I can't remember what the.
Yeah, so the two-hundred thousand dollar was merely, uh, to add more lighting along Main Street, and, uh, the good news is, as, as, and maybe this is a good time to talk about that, uh, as I have emailed, uh, and, and the city manager has emailed the members of the city council, uh, we requested, uh, the South Bay Cock to help us with three projects, and one was the downtown beauti, downtown specific plan, and they accommodated that, they, they are going to give us about seven-point-four million dollar in order to do three projects, and one was downtown, uh, specific plan. So we figured that as part of the downtown specific, specific plan, uh, it'll, it'll inclu, includes a lot of lighting, streetscaping, and this project is, is going to be happening soon. So this money's carryover, we really think maybe we should not, you know, get ahead of ourselves and let the, let the specific, specific plan for downtown to be kicked off and use the money wisely, and our intentions are, once the designers don't go, uh, go to, uh, South Bay Cock and ask for money for construction also. So this money is, really is carryover, but we could, uh, use it for other things, uh, but right now, this is only the carryover. Any other question? No?
You, you're only asking for an additional million on the plunge.
Yes.
We're at eight-hundred and change right now with change orders. We've got our foundation done, the new footers are in, we haven't decided about replacement of tiles or not, that's another eight-hundred thousand. I guess my question is, do you think a million dollars is enough if we're really going to complete this project by the end of the year?
Yeah, because we already have one and a half million carryover, I believe, for the, for the plunge, so this additional one million, unless something happens, I frankly feel confident that, that we can, we can finish the plunge project with.
Okay, but.
Yeah.
The idea that there will not be more change orders, I just don't think is a realistic goal that we can rely on.
I understand.
With any public works, let alone one where we're rehabbing an older facility. Um, that's number one. Number two, our budget assumes that we're going to meet our five million dollar fundraising goal, and we're at one-point-eight. So I, I think it might be smart for us, and I don't know where that comes from, maybe it's the, uh, rainy economic development, two million dollars that we've set aside that we might need to earmark, um, because again, this, this project will get completed, we've got a contractor, we've got a contract, if changes come in, those will have to be approved. So my concern is, I don't think a million dollars is going to get us to the finish line.
I, I hear you. Uh, my hope is that we will, regarding the change orders, we already have approved the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar worth of change orders, about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand are pending, because we need to still review it, hasn't come at the right time to implement those, and the upcoming one, the one that really deals with the, with the tiles is, is a big one, and, and I, just so that you know about, about regarding the tiles, we've been in touch, uh, with the consulting firm, and, uh, we received some documentation, and I'd be glad to talk about, uh, about why we need the tiles at this time or later, it's, it's up, um, up to the city council's, uh, pleasure.
Okay, but you're saying that, that change order, because it's so significant, will come before this council?
Yes.
Okay, so we can talk about it at that point.
Yeah.
And when, timeline-wise, when do you think that's going to happen?
The, the tiles, I believe, is in the critical path.
Yep.
And, uh, I, I believe it's going to be, uh, expected to be done in next few weeks. Oh, it's not anymore? Oh, okay.
Well, you can't fill the pool if you don't have tiles, so I would think it's, at some point it's important.
Sometime, yeah, we, we need.
But we'll know before we're coming back in July with our final budget, we'll have a decision about this tile thing before then, because that would be, that would be helpful.
Sure, uh, my recommendation frankly is, and we looked at other alternatives, and, uh, in my humble opinion, and that, that is to, you know, also the recommendation of our aquatic consulting firm is, is to install the tiles, because the other two alternatives are not vital, they don't work, and I would not recommend it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have time to get to it when it's presented.
And answering your question, we, we're, we're ready to bring, I mean, the eight-hundred thousand is a, is an estimate that, that we're currently working with, I'm going to meet with Elias, and we can have that on, on probably the, the next, probably the, the second agenda in May.
Sure, we'd be glad to.
Okay, great.
We'd be glad to.
And then we'll know that decision.
Which will be before the budget.
Before we're finalizing our budget.
First meeting in June, yep.
Great. So I know we're always going to pound the plunge to death here, but one of the things that I, that you just mentioned that, uh, is concerning to me right now, is that when we approved this project, it was based on us contributing X, us raising Y, right?
Yes, sir.
And, um, we seem to be very far behind on fundraising, and now, we're actually going to need more than what we initially thought we were going to need to fundraise. So, we were expecting to fundraise five mil?
The goal was five.
And we're at one-point-eight right now, and now you're going to be at six-point-five, probably by the end of it, that you need to raise? So the problem with all of this is, is that we're on the hook for it. So if we don't raise this, that money's coming out of our general fund, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
And that was not something we budgeted for. I just think that when we have an update on everything, I think we also need an update on how the fundraising's going, and what we're going to do in the, and, and, look, if the thing opens up in, in December, and we only got one-point-eight, what's the impetus for people to throw in another four million into it? Like to fundraise for something that's already open? There's no reason. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about this. So if we can have an update on how that's going, what the plan is, was this expected to be at one-point-eight right now, and we're on pace? Maybe I'm wrong, maybe this is exactly what was expected, I don't know. But we need something, because this is, this is going to be a problem.
Yeah, to, to Councilman Drew's point, it'd be good to benchmark this against the aquatics facility, because we had the same person leading the fundraising on that, in terms of an outside philanthropist, we had a lot of commitments lined up, and I believe the intent was to have other corporations follow on, and that seems to be the piece that's been missing.
Yes.
Lots to talk about.
Yeah. So we can come back with a, with a more thorough update, um, but we, we have had a slow start. Um, we are working with South Bay Sports Health and Recreation, um, there, there were some challenges with the fires, and that really got us in, into some sticky situations with some folks that we were counting on. However, we do have, I think we've got eight tours set up this week, um, of the facility, now that it's, there's really progress there, we are doing a real push, so we've got new, um, video footage being shot out there, we're trying to set up meetings with the mayor and some of the larger corporations that we haven't yet received funding from, so I'm not quite as, um, uncertain, I think that, I feel pretty good that we'll get at least pretty darn close to that, but, um, we can come back and provide, I can provide more of an update.
And to Lance's point, can we establish some milestones, like funding targets?
Yes.
Create a sense of urgency, because I think he's got a really good point, like, once the pool's built, there's no incentive for people to throw in money.
Yep, yes, so I'm, and I'll be talking with Sherri this week, too, um, but, but we are seeing significant progress. Like I said, now that we're able to have people out at the facility and tour it and see it, that's helping us.
Thank you. I've turned back to you.
Also on my calendar, I have a reminder every two months to bug Ally about the fundraising, because you, you are correct, um, the general fund is on the hook, five million dollars. Um, when we executed the contract back, uh, about a year ago, um, I mentioned to the council that, um, that five million dollars is something coming out of the general fund and needs to be patched up, um, and of course, at the time, I did mention that our reserve, being that at twenty-five percent, we might have to dip below that reserve just so that we can, um, potentially fund it, but luckily, our revenues did come in stronger, so then we were, we need to, uh, dip below that twenty-five percent reserve, so we'll, our reserve will remain at twenty-five percent going into next year as well, just wanted to let the council know. With that said, that really concludes, uh, the budget study session as a whole, um, I will be coming back to council, there were certain changes, um, that I will reflect on the June third council meeting, where I'll bring back the proposed budget as a whole, and then we will begin our fiscal year at July first. Any last questions, council?
Thank you, Paul.
No problem. Anything else, city manager?
Uh, no, nothing else, um, mayor, I think that, um, again, very ambitious, uh, budget with a lot of, uh, efforts to maintain a high-level quality of service, I think, hopefully you did see that within the budget, and again, thank you for, uh, attending this afternoon, and again, thank you to staff, and, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Five o'clock sharp, we are adjourned.